We'll have some appointments to both Conservation and the Historical Commission. I'll take those out of order due to travel obligations on the part of some of the nominees. We'll continue forward for an amplified sound permit for flag football. Listen to a change of managers for Chili's. And then spend a fair amount of time talking about a alleged liquor violation in the town of Reading. Continue a hearing regards a four-way stop sign at the corner of Sunnyside and Fairview. And then continue the discussion about complete streets. A proposal to continue to improve the streets for bike, walking, and other physical exercise type of activities, running, et cetera. And discuss kind of long-range planning for the town of Reading, what's been termed Reading 2020. The Board of Selectmen met a few weeks ago, almost a few months ago now, and talked about focusing on four major areas. We'll talk about that tonight. And finish the evening with our evaluation of the town manager and then a review of minutes. Before we go to our liaison reports, I did want to take the appointment of two Historical Commission members out of order. And I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Ensminger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just before this meeting, the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee was able to meet with two candidates for two openings on the Historical Commission. First candidate was Jonathan Barnes. He's a former member of the Community Planning Development Commission. I think I actually served with John during one of my terms in the latter part of the eighties. He's retired now and seeking to move on to some other endeavors. Ron Weston is a retired engineer who has had a lot of interplay with the Historical Commission, working on the Old South Bell Tower restoration. So we're very pleased we can offer position, one being a full term, one being an associate term to both these gentlemen. So I'd like to make the following motions. Move that Ronald Weston be appointed to the Historical Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
And move that Jonathan Barnes be appointed as an associate member of the Historical Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, and I'll defer the rest of our nominations till later.
Four zero.
Thank you for indulging that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting that up.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to entertain the Selectmen Liaison's report since the last time we met. John?
I actually have one before. It's not available.
Understood. Dan?
Well, addition to the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee, I was privileged to be asked by the Garden Club to help judge the adopted island competition. We have over, I think, 100 islands and areas near intersections and towns that have been planted by the people.
Hundred islands?
I think it's got to be near 100.
That's amazing.
It just, it can be an island, it can be an area on a corner, and we have a strip right out in front of town all here that is actually one of our candidates. So we were able to do that on Friday. We had two teams, one doing the north part of town, one doing the south part. And I will not spoil who the winners are, but the Garden Club is coming for us, I think, on September 2nd to announce the winners, and they may have a press release prior to that. So that's on the lighter side of things, and that was very enjoyable.
Kevin?
I have no comments at this time from liaison reports.
Thank you. For myself, I attended in the last two weeks a meeting of the Historical Commission to entertain a demolition delay for property on Summer Street. Meeting was very well-attended, standing room only, and in addition, the chair did a marvelous job maintaining order, had a number of letters written from those that couldn't attend. Town Council is here this evening in part to respond to some of the questions that I heard out of that and that others may have. But it's clear that the community is, to a person, unified about their view on the outcome. And here on the board, we're frankly interested in making sure that the laws and bylaws that govern the disposition of both buyer and seller and the public's interest are maintained. So again, it was a very well-behaved group despite the nature and importance of the discussion to the neighborhood. With that, Marcy, thank you for coming. You've been traveling a long distance.
I have traveled a long distance, yes.
So we're just here on the Selectmen Liaison's reports. I wouldn't expect you to have any of them, but perhaps you do.
I actually do have something. I talked to one of the members of the other community's, community advisory board members toward the Reading historical light today, who just wanted to express his concern about the fact of the sale of the bucket trucks at $350. And he was concerned that he felt like the commissioners were perhaps not taking it as seriously as he would have hoped they were, and so he did want to express that concern and pass that along, so.
And to that end, I hope, not hope, we will have a following Board of Selectmen meeting where I will extend an invitation to the other served towns for the sole reason of hearing the final report that we received from our town account. There are no other comments. I'll open the floor to public comment. I'll ask you if you do have something to say to please rise. Please introduce yourself, tell us your address, and then let us know what's on your mind. Is there anyone here for public comment? Well, this may be a record.
Should we all say anything?
Everyone's here now.
All right. Seeing.
I think we're going to have somebody here, if you have a spokesperson.
Yes.
Elizabeth Loopy, 167 Summer Avenue. I and my husband, Joseph Loopy, are here in behalf of the 01867 Neighborhood Preservation Association, which we formed last night.
Ah.
And we are very eager to have you listen to our plea that we are in somewhat of a better community on our street. It's been named a wonderful street by the Whore Boys and the Port. And we are very much against the idea of criteria in children's school coming and disturbing that serenity.
Thank you.
And I think we have other issues.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sir?
Robert Corwin, 199 Summer Ave. I too am part of the association formed last night. And essentially, I think what we're also looking to do is just to formally request the town, help us in, as much as you said, investigating the legal avenues that are available to us. And we understand that, you know, everyone has rights here, so, but we do want to understand what ours are specifically and the town's. We're going to be doing what we can do, whatever that's going to be, we don't know yet. There's been a number of, as you mentioned, the, at the Historical Commission meeting, a number of questions came up that were not able to be answered, and they were kind of legal in nature regarding the bylaws. So we want to stress, I guess, that, you know, or implore that the town council, you know, get involved as heavy as they can. And we understand they're new to the town as well, so we don't know if that's a good or a bad thing.
I think they're new to Reading. I don't think they're new to some of the land use issues, so.
Yeah. So, but I think most of the folks here tonight, last night we had about 75 folks at our meeting. I think most of the folks here tonight save, I'm sure a handful are here for the same reason. Just we want to kind of emphasize as much as we can, you know, the importance it is to us and hopefully to the town in general.
Understand, thank you. And Mr. Corwin, just to clarify, my understanding is the limit to the Board of Selectmen is as the last recourse to an appeal to the demolition delay. That's not in dispute. The applicant for the building has fully accepted the six-month delay.
Correct.
Our recourse is simply to challenge that. If there was a challenge, there won't be. The balance of this, I believe, will all come down to what is, what are the laws and bylaws that govern this, both at our level and as they relate to this Dover amendment?
Correct, correct. And anything else you guys can come up with.
Sir?
Yeah, Bob Salter, 247 Summer Avenue. Maybe you received the letter that I sent you last night. But I think that in addition to what we're talking about, I think that based on this, what I know or have learned in the last couple of days about the Dover Act that will be used to build or build a new, a school on that property if it so happens, we'll be able to bypass all sorts of laws and regulations that we have here in Reading. And it, I think the Selectmen really need to consider to act in such a way that you might be able to have more control than just challenging the Dover Act by potentially incorporating that property into the historic district, which is just around the corner, the block next to it. And I certainly think that there are probably people on Summer Avenue who own houses that wouldn't mind being incorporated into that same historic group. And so, given that you only have six months and we might only have one town meeting in that time, I think you really need to consider being proactive rather than reactive to what comes down.
All right. Town Council will be the final judge. We talked somewhat about this moments ago, and my understanding is if it were, first of all, the property has already been put under, as I understand it, a contingent purchase and sale.
PNS.
And as such, you couldn't retroactively declare it part of the historical.
Probably not.
District. Even if you could, it would impact only the demolishment of the building and the preservation of the building, not the proposed use. Because as a structure, it would remain intact, so, and such a district would dictate nothing about its use. But I'll defer to Town Council, who has much more color on the subject. As I said at the opening, my opening remarks, we've got both buyers and sellers and members of town, members of the town that aren't necessarily buyers, who all have interests. The rules of engaging and the laws and bylaws already exist, and our task is really to ferret our way through that, to find out which apply, which don't, and where there's ambiguity, raise that up and try to get clarity. You, on the other hand, have, I think, taken a pretty important step, which is formulate a group, and you'll undoubtedly get counsel of your own. I mean, it's not uncommon in this day and age for attorneys to disagree. It happens all the time, they're called trials. And by all means, you'll probably pursue that of your own accord. We'll do the best we can from the town side. You have my assurances.
Well, I think the point is that we trust the Selectmen to look out for the best interests of the people of Reading. And in the current situation, I think there's a strong feeling that the sale of that property for the purpose is probably not in the best interest long-term for Reading. And so, anything that the Selectmen can do, rather than to observe, is something that needs to be done very quickly. Thank you.
Understand. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, John Freitas, 70 Howard Street. I appreciate your discussion, your opening remarks anyways, and I totally understand where you're coming from, how you have to enforce town bylaws and things like that. And I just want to have a realistic expectation of what we as a committee, I'm part of that 01867 committee, can expect in regards to the town council. I mean, are they going to be looking, I know they're going to look at the obviously Dover Act and the bylaws and things, but are they going to look at the actual entity itself, criteria in childhood development as to whether in fact they really are a nonprofit organization, or is this, you know, something that the organization has to look at? I think the reason I asked a question is we really want to, timeframe is short on everyone's behalf here, and we just want to have a realistic expectation of what we can expect from the town fathers and the town council.
All right. Bob or Jean, could you describe just the overall process of a traditional sale and where in this case, the town's interest in determining the Dover Amendment applicability would fit? Just describe how a sale would normally go down, and then where in that process, since the Dover Amendment's likely to be applied, or when would our review of that applicability occur?
Sure. Jean Delios, Assistant Town Manager for Community Services. So typically, what happens and what has happened is an applicant will come to the building inspector, and in this case, apply for a demolition permit, which is what has triggered Historical Commission to hold a public hearing and determine the nature of the demolition delay, which they have. And now that six-month clock has been set. So the next step is for them to begin the process, the permitting process associated with what happens after they demolish the building. And that permitting process could happen at any time. It could happen, it could start next week. But as Town Council has advised us, in order for us to evaluate whether or not this would be eligible for protection under the Dover Amendment, Master General Law 40A, Section 3, that would be, we would need to see ownership. So that's the linchpin in order for us to be able to react to something. We need an application, and we need to see demonstration of ownership.
Can you? Town Council, would you maybe clarify, once ownership is presented, what would happen now in terms of review?
Okay, well, typically, a property owner would engage the town by filing an application, probably in this case, a building permit application, but we'll leave it to them to decide what sort of application that they want to file. So to be clear, the Dover Amendment says that no zoning bylaw shall prohibit or regulate or restrict the use of land or structures for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions of public bodies politic, or by a religious sect or denomination, or by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided however that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. So, so there's basically two parts to determine whether they're eligible for Dover Amendment protection. One is, are they a nonprofit educational corporation that owns the land? And the second is, are they going to be using the property for educational purposes? Those are not the same thing. Each one of those tests has to be met. Typically, the town would not engage on that subject. That is, it would be unusual for me to render an opinion about that stuff until there's an actual application in front of us. So what we would expect is that the property owners, lawyers, would have to make the case that they in fact qualify, that they meet both parts of that test to be eligible for the Dover Amendment protection. So, under your zoning bylaws, the building inspector would refer this to what's called limited site plan review, where the issue of its applicability would be heard, and a determination would be made that would be made advisory to the building inspector. And the building inspector would then either accept that advice or most likely accept that advice and make a decision, and then that decision would be appealable to the zoning Board of Appeals. So, at the town level, there's at least two hearing processes that are likely to occur before, before the matter is resolved and before anybody goes to court. So, but, but it is up to the applicant to come forward and demonstrate that they qualify for Dover Amendment protection. Now, the, I have seen the articles of organization of the corporation, does have the word educate in there, and the, and I've seen a brochure of the services that they provide. But I wouldn't want to advise anybody about whether they qualify until I saw why they think they qualify, and then make them prove it to the satisfaction of the town. So, unfortunately, the decision-makers here are reactive, which is to say they don't have any decision to make until somebody asks them to do something. So until there's an application in front of us, there isn't really a decision that can be made. But we do expect that an application may happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Apologies, I should have introduced Mr. Roy Miares, the council from Miares in Harrington, who's our new town council. A little bit of a trial by fire here.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm very excited to have been selected and look forward to working with everybody. I've already had the pleasure of working with Bob a little bit and with Jean, and they're throwing a lot of things at me, and I'm swinging at the ones I can.
Welcome aboard. Before I take any other questions, Kevin, you had a second.
Yeah, just real quickly, maybe either, either one of you could answer. In relation to, I guess, the timeline, just so everyone's clear on it, and the demolition delay has been issued, correct?
Yep.
They've accepted it. At what point, I would assume most businesses would want to know if they can do business in this town before they did anything, such as demolishing a structure. But technically, that doesn't sound like that has to fall in that manner. That could actually, the structure could be taken down after the six months, and then they could apply. Is that correct?
Technically, that could be, but you're right, it doesn't seem as, it doesn't seem that, that somebody would invest in the cost of taking down the building unless they were pretty sure they were going to be able to.
Right, okay.
To proceed to build the next thing.
You wouldn't think, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a follow-up?
Sure.
Well, welcome, and we think you're wonderful, by the way.
Thank you.
Right. I just want to be crystal clear in this. You have to review the application, but would you go so far as to question the viability or the, like, if they say we're a nonprofit organization because we educate, we do this, we do that, and that, would you challenge those particular things? Or, that's what I'm just trying to see what your role is and where it starts and where maybe private counsel has to be retained. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I don't know if challenge is the right word, but I would, I'd say what we do is we put them to their proof, that we choose to say they have the burden of demonstrating that they are eligible for Dover Amendment protection. So they will submit whatever materials and information they deem to be appropriate. We will review it. We're not shy about asking questions, and we will ultimately give our advice probably in the, directly to the building inspector or maybe in the course of the limited site plan review. And what we, you know, the, I certainly, when the time comes, I'm certainly open to having input from anyone who thinks they've got something important to add, so that.
Would you like to come to your office often?
I go through Bob, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sir? Yes, please.
Hi, Ian Garland, 189 Summer Ave. I don't want to be redundant, but I want to be just really crystal clear. So we cannot try to apply for a historic district if there's already a signed PNS. Is that correct?
The attorney has referred to the one in the room, or one of them anyway.
Is that correct?
I hate to contradict the chair on my first meeting, but no, that's not quite right.
That's not quite.
I think what, what, there is no historic district now. If they, if a historic district were proposed, then the, it would be applicable to all new permits that are, all new permit applications. Unfortunately, there's already a demolition permit application, so that's really the stumbling Which is not to say that this is a, that this is a bad idea. I don't know whether it's a bad idea or a good idea yet, but if, but if you were to get a historic district bylaw in place soon, it would apply, it could potentially apply to the follow-on permits. That is, the new structure. And as we indicated, the new structure, the applicant probably wants to know whether they're going to be able to build the new structure before they tear down the old one. So, so, this idea was only presented to me just before the meeting. And I can't say that I have thought every aspect of this through, but, but there's at least a kernel of an idea there.
Okay. My other question is, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. Do they, so they do not have to apply for the Dover Amendment until after the purchase and sale of the house is closed on, correct? They don't apply, make that application?
Well.
They'd probably do the permits before that. They'd want their permits before they close.
No, on most real estate transactions of this sort are, the purchase and sale is contingent on getting certain permits. And so, no, it's not correct to say they have to close before they can apply, but they can't act on the permit until they close.
Okay, so they potentially could not be eligible and how own this property, is that correct?
Well, again, I, I don't know what's in the purchase and sale agreement.
Right.
Unlikely ever to know what's in the purchase and sale agreement, but one would expect the purchase and sale agreement to have a provision that allows the buyer to walk away if they don't get the permits. So it seems to me unlikely that they would end up owning the property without getting the permits.
And my last thing, I won't take up more of your time. If this company was a nonprofit company is tied to a for-profit corporation in their tax, public tax filings, would that make them potentially not eligible for this Dover Amendment?
Yeah, I guess it would depend on the circumstances.
But that needs to be investigated.
And that would need to be investigated, yes.
Thank you.
All right, just for the record, you can correct me anytime you need. Please do. Sorry. Charlie?
I'm Charlene Reynolds-Santo on the Reading Historical Commission. And there is currently a historic district bylaw in town, so we do already have the bylaw. One of the things, I do kind of want to take the opportunity to say that if we still had the 12-month delay, we might have a little more power on this. It would not, if it changed tomorrow, it would not have anything to do with this structure, but I want to take the opportunity to add that in there. We had questions at the hearing regarding the Dover Amendment, and you've addressed that, and also regarding the transfer of ownership. How, according to our bylaw, that if the, we have a demolition delay right now, and it is the, where, how does that impact when the current owner transfers it to the next owner? I'm not sure that we covered that at all in our, in the bylaw. I'm not sure, but that would be a question that we do want to get answered. Maybe it just goes along with the building permit. If the building permit transfers to the next person, then this does, so that sounds logical, but.
Okay. So the general answer is that a demolition permit is just like a building permit, and it can be applied for and obtained by one person and exercised by a new owner.
Okay.
The, so, as a general matter, that's, that's the case. During the six-month period, there probably, the demolition delay bylaw probably has, I say probably because, you know, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but it probably has provisions, most of them have provisions, that suggests that the owner has to take certain steps during that six-month period. And the, and I'm sure that everyone will be watching carefully to make sure that those steps are in fact followed.
Any other questions or public comments? Sir?
Frank Keane at 105 King Street. I just have one observation. I've been in town for about 43 years, and as this process continues, I don't think you're ever going to see a wall lobster. I don't think you're ever going to see a more lopsided scorecard relative to those who are against versus those that are for. I think right now it's town against three. So if others are pro this, I would like to have them come and present their case to the selectmen and let them tell you why this is going to be beneficial to the town. As a group here, we're telling you why it isn't. We'd like to give them an opportunity to come and say why the town's going to benefit from this. And I've asked the selectmen to implore them to do that.
Just to respond to that, our latitude here is largely to make sure that the bylaws and laws are followed. We don't get to weigh in on whether the merits of the argument are good or bad or whether there's 186 to three. It's all about what do the bylaws and laws say and how do they apply here? And that's why we have our town council to help us interpret that because some of this is not clear, particularly those not schooled in the law. So I appreciate the lopsided nature. By the way, if anything, it's getting bigger, not smaller, so. But that's not germane to the outcome of this.
Any other questions?
There is an old saying, "The Supreme Court reads the election returns."
I'm sorry, I'm going to take folks that haven't spoken at that. I'll return.
Hi, I'm Demetra Tsakras. I'm over on Oak Street, 106 Oak. So I don't live in the neighborhood, but I have friends who do and I also am in that neighborhood a lot because I'm part of the morning and afternoon melee because I have a daughter, Parker. So I was heartened, sir, by what you said about this amendment. And I know that, if you know the tabernacle, they successfully fought off some of the scope of that enormous building in Belmont because it was not reasonable. And when you said that the Dover Amendment allows for sort of jumping to the head of the line as long as things were reasonable, that gives me hope because I am sure that the selectmen will vigorously do whatever is in their power to make sure that proper parking studies are done, that safety of kids is being looked at, that safety of residents. These residents have to put up with, you know, church parking on Sunday and then school, 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 school. Even in summer, it's still going on. So I just hope that as much vigor you guys can bring to the table to help make sure that this project is reasonable, if it does have to go ahead and fits in with the beauty of that neighborhood, which means that our tax dollars stay reasonable, that would be really good. And thank you very much.
I think you've seen the board do some of that with the recent proposal to use the St. Agnes Building with regard to parking, with regard to public safety. So you can be assured those same kinds of assessments will be done here. If they're applicable. In the back, sir?
Yeah, David Godwin, 189 Summer Avenue as well. But towards your last statement, my understanding is that was not going to be a school but was going to be an apartment. And so my understanding is that some of the rules and regulations, if it does come in under the Dover Amendment, could be bypassed. So things like craft that are not explicitly listed in the amendment. So that is a concern of ours, is that by passing that rigor, you know, those things will be bypassed and entered up and out.
If you're speaking to a board tonight that isn't fully aware of what applies in the Dover Amendment case or not, it's an unusual case. My only point is, my assurance is we'll do whatever we can to be fair and impartial in the application of law.
Just a side note to the reasonableness argument. Jean, you can correct me if I'm right on this. Fall town meeting did enact certain setback in height requirements on schools and other properties like churches. There were none previously. So we could have literally had a temple be built to 100 stories here before that was passed. So we do have bylaws in place right now to govern that.
Any other comments? Mr. Sullivan, yeah?
Yes, given that town council gave a glimmer of hope to the idea of putting a historic overlay over that property that might affect new building permits. And given the fact that there's a special town meeting probably in September, when would something need to be in place in order to make it in the special town?
August 16th, we're closing the morgue.
I think actually the board will probably close the morgue on September 2nd.
Oh, that's a change.
Do it that late, it's probably better.
Okay.
So in advance of September 2nd.
So that's one week, that's very close.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so...
And that's when the language has to be finalized by an attorney.
Correct.
Checked by this one.
What we heard in the meeting yesterday is the historic committee was a little bit frustrated that they have no teeth other than to delay a six-month decision. But if there was a historic overlay over that property, they would have a little more power to impose some additional oversight. And given that, and that there might be a glimmer of hope, I would hope that it is in the best interest of the selectmen in order to have a play here rather than be a victim of the Dover Amendment. And with that, there's an urgency that's only a few days away in order to get it done. And so rather than just wait, I think that you do have a play here and you should take it.
Bob, what would be the process to craft such a document? Would it be something that would be sponsored by...
I think Ray would first need to look at what we have existing to see if it applies. Undoubtedly, town meeting would have to approve something, but the question is what? If we already have a process to establish a historic district, what they approve might be relatively small. Here it is, here's another district. We only have one so far. And just to be clear, it's not the historical commission that will have any authority over this. A new group will have to be formed. There's a West Street Historic District, as Charlene announced. And if I may, I just want to ask the group a question and you can let me know the answer. If one of you would volunteer to be sort of a lead contact for us, that would be really helpful, so that we can keep the group aware of whatever communication should be passed back and forth. And you just need to tell me that later.
You can imagine...
Who'd think I know who it's going to be? You can imagine a group this big and this diverse, it's really tough to get communication. So having that one person that broadcasts it and vice versa would be very helpful.
Point of clarification?
Sure.
August 2nd or September 2nd?
September 2nd.
So in terms of, the town council mentioned earlier about keeping him informed of any, or them informed of any pertinent information. Would that then, you prefer that have funneled to him how?
Through Bob.
It should all go through town.
Yeah, through me. Everything goes through Bob.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Question?
Yes. David O'Gonan, 210 Summer Avenue. Does any of that remain private or privileged information if it's community? It's not, right? It would be subject to FOIA or if anything that we were to communicate to the town manager or town council would...
I've been wrong once tonight, so let me turn it around.
I'm married, I'm wrong constantly.
Ditto.
So the attorney-client privilege, it applies and it actually supersedes the public records law. And so what that means is that communications between town officials and me are privileged. It's up to them to decide, it's not up to me to decide. It's up to them to decide whether they want to release the information or not. It's completely up to them.
And to whom it's released, right?
And to whom, well, once it's released, it's public. Once it's released, it's public. So your communications to Bob are just like any other communication to Bob. You're getting special protection even though you're thinking it's intended ultimately to come to me.
No, I'm making the opposite, which is why I asked the question.
Okay, so. So you should not assume that anything that you say to Bob, any document that you give to Bob in particular, would be protected from disclosure if somebody were to ask for it.
So the neighborhood point person is who?
Introduce yourself, sir.
Yes, I do.
Introduce yourself, please.
Our newest member of the historical commission.
Welcome aboard. Good time for you to be here.
I didn't see a fading frenzy about...
Oh, Mary Ellen O'Neill.
I'll just mention that Cinder Romer is the chairman of the group and I am the vice chair. And we're working together, we have other officers and a large group of interested residents and citizens. Thank you.
Any other comments or public comments this evening? Thank you all.
Just for purposes of my own clarity, so following the bouncing ball correctly. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the historic meeting, just kind of just pulse and turn. But, and these probably would have been answered for me, but for my own purposes and any appropriate person can speak out to answer these for me. It's my understanding that the current ownership is being maintained by the original homeowner. Is that correct? But that there's an active PNS, is that correct?
To our knowledge.
Yes.
So that makes me think that the application for the demolition permit was made by the current homeowner.
Correct.
Okay. And so in order to have a building permit, Jean, you mentioned that ownership has to be identified. So that ownership, despite an existing PNS, which is private intervention, whether that's in play or not is really kind of secondary. A building permit would be applied for, I'm assuming if that happened sooner, would be done by the current owner, correct?
Possibly.
Okay, and so what I understand about an expanded historic district, I want to ask you this, Ray, is that the demolition permit cannot be impacted by the, by a new historic district opening, is that correct?
It seems to be correct, yes.
Okay. And so the person who has this permit can tear this property down in six months.
Right. Regardless.
Regardless. And that's the right of that person.
That's right.
New historic district would obviously have an implication on a new building.
That's correct.
So it sounds like this is really about a sense of urgency from the standpoint of, you know, any, I mean, if there's action towards a historic district and so forth. And everything else is really pretty unclear at this time. Is that fair to say? That we really don't know the nature of any PNS. We have thoughts that there's, you know, that we, this criteria group... So I'm asking these questions just so that in my own head, I mean, I've been able to read scores of letters that have been sent to me and to my brothers and sisters here. And I certainly understand, I mean, I get it. I get why everybody's where they are. And it makes a lot of sense to me, but there seems to be, seems to need to be some kind of focused energy instead of only, I mean, it feels like we're blasting a shotgun at this problem instead of, you know, taking a rifle shot at it. And that seems to be the more appropriate course of action. I was really happy to hear in the early remarks that there's a vocal association that is coming together. I'm hoping that that gets legs in maybe a more legal way and understands that people have the opportunity to maybe do something very powerful from a citizen's standpoint. Because it's my understanding from everything I've heard tonight and, you know, you've prefaced your remarks, John, is that there are significant limitations as to, you know, we sit as the board looking out and we're, we operate at the pleasure of the citizens. We're elected as their representatives to look out for their best interest. But there are some limitations as to, you know, what we can do there.
Exactly.
It kind of needs a, you know, a citizen groundswell in order to be able to get, take the steps in a timely, expedient fashion in order to get the desired results. So I just kind of say that as an open statement to everybody in the room, just kind of from my perspective.
Can you just amplify your points? I think the two points of urgency are, one, establishing for your own self and doing an investigation of your own self as to the applicability of this proposal to be covered by Dover. Your own council should give you that, right? And the second is the institution of an additional historical district and getting that language, if we're going to do it, in a form ready to be seen by town meeting in early September. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Cinder Romer, 176 Summer Avenue. This would be for town council and possibly Charlene. It's my understanding, under that six-month demolition bylaw, that the current owner is supposed to work with the historical commission to possibly seek an alternate solution and an additional buyer. And it's my understanding at the meeting last week that she said she couldn't because she was under a purchase and sale. And I thought that it's a condition of the bylaw that's one of the things she's supposed to be doing, is working to find an alternate purchaser for the property to be able to avoid the demolition.
Unfortunately, there's nothing in the bylaw that says that they don't work with the historical commission. This is what happens. So there's no teeth.
Could it invalidate the bylaws in general?
I don't think so.
And they would have to start...
Maybe council would like to say that I'm wrong.
Probably need to let Ray get it.
A few more minutes on the books here. He's blushing already here, so.
So it seems unlikely to me that, even though there's a requirement that they cooperate with the historical commission to find a new buyer and whatever, all of those terms are pretty loose. What is constitutes cooperate and whatever. Plus, at the end, there's no consequence for failure to do it. So the, in legal terms, that provision is called, is what we call directory. It tells you to do something, but it doesn't attach any consequence to it. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't view the failure to cooperate as a way of invalidating the demolition delay permit. I'm sorry, the demolition permit. And the fact that there is no teeth is certainly not a basis for invalidating the bylaw. There are loads of bylaws that have no teeth. It's sometimes, it's precisely because they have no teeth that they are indeed valid.
Any other comments or questions?
Just one other thing, in terms of, back to, as part of the requirement of having the owner work with the historical commission to find alternatives, it's not the association's intent to stick it to the current homeowner. And in our discussions that we've had, you know, we thoroughly want to work with her and try to find an alternative solution. But that viable solution may require the town to bend some of its rules that are currently in place, that maybe have previously been enforced upon her, that have gotten us to this point, unfortunately. So I want to just kind of make the town aware that we may need some of that latitude to make a compelling argument for her to leave what she's currently involved with, if that's going to be the case, and move to something, to another solution that would work for her as well as everyone else.
Yeah, the seed, I think, I know exactly what you're talking about, Rodney.
Yeah, I do too.
And the seeds of some of tonight's discontent were sown years ago. And in fact, none of the members of the board before you, nor the town manager, nor town council.
Nor town council.
Nor staff. So in many ways, the circumstances that might cause some agitation on the part of the seller are being misdirected, if you will, at a whole group of other persons. So I get your point. And we may not have the latitude you described. I've made some inquiries this evening on those very points. So, I'm sorry, there's a hand way in the back that I've got to respond to, yes.
I'm sorry, but I think this might be a little hypothetical. If perhaps this owner was taking taxes on this property, would that negate the fact that it indeed was historical property and now we have no teeth at all? In other words, could she claim? My understanding is if you have historical property and you're not allowed to take a tax deduction, is that true?
I'm not sure what you mean.
I'm not sure.
I'm sure that's not true.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Everett Bollinger, Chair of the West Street Historic History. Oh, I see my shoulder's getting heavier.
Oh, I see my shoulder's getting heavier. I would like to just make a statement that, that committee be involved, because I've heard under the umbrella, I've heard a new group, and I think under the last activity of about four months ago, when we had trouble people coming on the board just before that, and then that whole process became very trying, we're a relatively new group trying to hold up a very important section of history in our town, and we've missed the vote in eighty-five, and we missed the vote a year ago when we acted on the historical commission, and we didn't give them teeth, and we didn't give the town teeth, and we didn't give the majority teeth. And that, that really hurts, and that's going to hurt if, if this plays out. So, I think it would be fair to involve the present historic, West Street Historic District, to make sure that we can have the input to say, this is what's working or not working, this is we feel how we would handle it, because basically, I think it's going to be really, really important. And there are two issues here. One is the building coming down, and the other is the building going up.
Yep, exactly.
And it's hard to separate the two, but they're both very, very important. From a historical point, it's the building going down, that's the first one. And I would stress that I have been at meetings for historical reasons where the Board of Selectmen has chosen, and I think it was Foster Anderson House, and if you don't know what I'm talking about, it's the house that was on the Meadowbrook Golf Course, and the town made available a piece of land at a deal price so that that house could be saved. So, there are times that options can become available, and we just don't know what they are. So, say they're not, we don't have to do that, we can't do that, we just don't know what's in the wind right now. So, I think we need to be open, or I think, I think we have to, I don't think the right word is attack, but shoot from several single fire rifles and make sure we have target, because basically, this is a pristine example of our historical heritage.
And just to follow that analogy one step further, it's really important to make sure what you're aiming at, and that it's clear and crisp and principled.
So said. That's the target.
Yeah, that's the target. Any other comments or questions? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, there was.
Just one last question for the new town council. The fact that there's no teeth in this bylaw, and the fact that it says that, you know, she shouldn't, the current buyer, again, I have no axe to grind by, Sally, she can do whatever she wants, except this. But the fact that there's no teeth in the bylaw, does that mean he just, she just gets to do what it is, or you respond to him saying you're in violation of this bylaw, or what is, I guess I don't understand the sense of having a bylaw, nobody's going to pay attention, there's nothing that can happen to you if you don't.
The bylaw I think you're referring to is the demolition delay bylaw?
No, the fact that she has to entertain other officers and discuss things.
Oh, I see.
It's part of the, as a demolition delay bylaw. I guess I'm just, I'm just not clear on that. Is that something you would push back on? Unsuccessfully, I might have, but yeah.
The bylaw has requirements. We can certainly make inquiries as to whether the requirements are being satisfied. At the end of the day, it doesn't mean, though, that, that, that on the six month and one day, the building can't come down. So, you don't have that remedy. So, it's not like you can oppose it, you know?
No, no, I understand.
Extension on the six months if they, if they're not.
But if I were the buyer...
You can certainly make, you can certainly make inquiries as to whether the, the bylaw is, is being complied with.
So, I guess my question to you as a follow-up is, if I were the buyer and you, and you were town council, and you said, hey, I don't think all the elements of the bylaw are being upheld, that would cause me at least some concern. I'm not sure I'd go knocking down a building.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, is that, is that odd, or is that something that you would entertain?
Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter whether I entertain it or not.
But Tom, Tom, I said, you recommend to the selectmen.
It only matters whether, whether the buyer is concerned about that, and, you know, I can't speak to that anymore.
Thank you.
The other, the other point I'll make is while the bylaw is the focus of this discussion, what really, the confounding circumstance is the educational nature of the proposed use, which sets aside, which is really the rub. We have plenty of regulations for zoning and setback, and those are largely rendered moot, given the, with some exceptions by the proposed nature here. Any other comments or questions? I'd like to thank you all for coming out. The other piece of information is nothing beats having a room full of interested citizens and getting things done. And I can't tell you how impressive it is to get good behavior and well-formed questions and questions that are on point. Nothing's more powerful than a reasoned argument, and getting it from such a large group is, is even more powerful. One last question, Charlene.
One of the things about, about the demolition delay bylaw, where we want to use those six months to work with the owner, the, what has happened many times is that we get to talk to the owner, see what they want to do, help them maybe incorporate, keep a few walls, incorporate something that came from the previous structure depending, and we work with them, and sometimes it gets released early, because we've come to an agreement that, okay, you know, we're going to save these walls or something, then we can release it early. That's a lot of the encouragement of trying to work with us. That's where meat of that part of it really is.
Cindy, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I just have to add that in this situation, I don't think that would be the case.
Yes.
Because their request is for a ninety-nine hundred, one level square foot structure with a twenty-four hundred square foot playground with parking for twenty cars. They have no intention of maintaining any of that structure with supposed asbestos in, in the walls and all the lead paint if they're going to have young children in that property. There's not a chance in the world one piece of that house is going to stick. None. Because it, it can't. It inherent in the, the type of business that they're going to be putting in there, there is no way that structure is going to come down. And I've read the whole application from the architect. They're, they have no intention of holding any of that. So, in this case, I don't think that's going to be the case.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we take two minutes while the room closes?
Allison is here. Allison Steger, I was going to suggest that. She's here, so. Start of that next.
There's Summer Street. The house is right about Summer Street. So, it's a couple streets. Also, and these streets are historical.
Well, but that is a, because with the way this is set up, the historic district shall consist of one or more district areas.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it's a town meeting vote to just...
Just add the map?
Yeah, I think so.
Add, change the map? It's pretty simple.
Yeah, I don't think they need complicated language, but I wanted you to make sure you review it.
Well, I've spent five minutes on it.
I know, yes, exactly. And I'll talk to Mary Ellen, I know her well.
Should be fine.
So, so September second is not a burden for them if they want to do this. It's not a, is it?
No, no, no. All they have to do is, somebody's got to produce a map of what they want included in the, in the, to change the appendix.
It's cross-business activity between two unprofitable...
And of course, there's a human process, so that's similar to designing a process.
Yeah, I'd ask Gene as to what the process that is. I think it's CPD.
Yes.
So, their meeting schedule is a little...
And then the other part, the larger association.
Or else that would face the...
Education.
So, what is it you want?
I don't know. You may want to ask.
You guys could clear the room if you have, if you have no other business before the board, if you...
So, it looks like it's very... I spent five minutes on it somehow, and it looks like all they have to do is, the way this is set up, there's one historic district, but there can be more than one district area. You don't have to have a new commission, you don't have to do anything, you just have to amend the map.
So, you change the, you draw the circle on the map.
So, the West Street Historic District would now incorporate Summer Street as well?
Well, well...
Just rename it.
I think we'd have to rename it.
Yeah.
It's the Summer West Street.
But it, the, the bylaw says, the bylaw says the district shall consist of one or more district areas.
So, it comprehends it already.
As, as shown in Appendix B1. Now, it turns out it's actually in Appendix A, but...
Stand back far, it looks like an A.
That's right. But it seems to me that all you need to do is to, is to make a new map.
Yes.
So, it's relatively trivial to do that.
Yes. Some, I mean, it's not trivial to me, I wouldn't be able to do it, but someone would know, someone would know how, where to put it.
Yeah, by September, you will be able to do it.
No, no, no.
No, that's not his job.
I will never be, I will never be able to do it. Someone has to decide what's in it.
Yeah.
You couldn't spot to that map, could you? Here, this, this house on this side.
We've got a full agenda, folks, so let's go on to, to what's next.
No, we wouldn't want to do that.
It being five after eight, at least according to our highly accurate timepiece on the wall, what I want to take out of, I guess it is in, out of order, is the Conservation Commission...
And Cultural Council.
And Cultural Council appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we were happy to interview two candidates for the Cultural Council tonight, Rosemary Lewis, twenty-six-year Reading resident, a lifelong supporter of the arts, and Maryanne Kozlowski, thirty-plus-year Reading resident, longtime resident, former member of the Recreation Committee, both very interested in the position of Cultural Council. And also Allison Steger, who I believe is here tonight, we have recommended for the Conservation Commission. Allison's a recent graduate of UNH, majored in environmental conservation and sustainability, and was also an intern at Hancock Associates in the areas of wetland science. So, I'm pleased to make the following nominations. Move to, to appoint Allison Steger to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? No, five zero.
Move to appoint Rosemary Lewis to the Cultural Council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero.
And move to appoint Maryanne Kozlowski to the Cultural Council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second by twenty seconds. All those in favor? Five zero.
And we still have openings on other boards, which we hope will get some applicants for.
Good. Well, congratulations to the, to the new members.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, we've had about an hour discussion of public comment. Did you want to take us briefly through the town manager?
No, I think we'll skip that and go right to Carl.
All right. All right, we have an amplified, we have an amplified sound permit here.
Can't hear you.
To request an amplified sound permit for flag football. This is the third year, Carl, that we've had this activity, and from what I've been shown, the enrollments are up strongly, so, Carl?
Thank you. Hopefully it won't take as long as previous.
You're not tearing anything down or building anything there.
Thank you for meeting with me. Jimmy Murphy, Reading resident, who was at, well, he was at a T-ball game, so he wasn't able to make it. Tonight, and myself, this is our third year we've had flag football. We, this is in partnership with the Reading Recreation, of which they certainly glowingly endorse our program. Our first year, we had two hundred kids. Last year, we had three fifty, and unfortunately, we're going to have a waiting list of, we're at five hundred. And we actually did sue down the recreation department, didn't really like us around Fourth of July, because this year, instead of starting the registration August first, we did July first. By the Fourth of July, we had three hundred and fifty people signed up. It was, it's just crazy. What Jimmy and I want to do, and what we've always been able to do, is really make this a community event. On average, we probably have a couple thousand parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles down there, and we'll have the cheerleading, high school football cheerleaders who do face painting. We hire the high school kids to officiate the games in normal divisions because parents are not cool enough to coach sixth and eighth grade kids. We have the high school football team players to coach the team. This year, we actually started a girls' only division, and that's been gangbusters, which is great.
How many young ladies have signed up?
We have over sixty.
Oh, my goodness.
Which is, which is a huge number. It is interesting, and in the younger divisions, typically, the young ladies are better athletes.
Sure.
Hand-eye coordination, everything seems to be better, and it's always interesting when a young boy who thinks he's going to be able to get the girl, and she just blows right by. I told him, that's life, buddy, you know, that's... You know, one of the things that we, we always do, which is exciting for us, is we try bringing in the, the local businesses, where we'll have a Portland Pie Night. Cupcake City brings their truck down, for it to be able to do it. We try and make it really almost like the, the street fair in terms of bringing as many people as possible, because we really want it to be a community. But the only problem we've ever had with the DJ that we have going on there was last year in kindergarten, first grade, we actually stopped the game because Cotton Eye Joe was being played, and I don't know if that's like, kind of like the dance where the bad teams actually had a competition for the best during the game, and had to stop it. That was the only problem we had with, with the music. John Feudo drives around in his car with the window down to make sure everyone's there. I always get nervous when I see Chief Cormier's vehicles coming by and like, oh, what happened? And usually, the officer says to me, it's just like, Carl, where all the kid, you know, there's no kids in town, they're all down here, so we want to see what's going on there. The crazy numbers are, this year, we'll probably have about thirty to thirty-five percent of the entire student body, and then the elementary schools at this event on Saturday nights. We're very cognizant of the, the families that are along the Burks Meadow Drive on the Coolidge side, so we actually have speakers point towards the open area, so it's, there's nothing there. The DJ is rated G, and it's funny, sometimes, you know, a song will be on, they'll be on like Kiss One Oh Eight or something like that, and we'll hear something that is, quote unquote, acceptable, the FCC is not acceptable for us. So, we do a lot of screening of, of the material. A lot of that music is going to be what you'd hear at the Boston Garden, like Jock Rocks and stuff like that. And always, you know, we will rock you, that's always a famous song. We'll love to have any questions that you guys may have. Anyone come down. It's just such a community event, and it's a lot of fun, because we're also incorporating the high school teams, because they're always looking to raise money, where the, we'll work with, we're working with the boosters and the athletic director. Where one night, the concession stand may go to the volleyball team, or one night, the track team, so that everyone can be able to generate some, some money from that. So, that way, it's just not a football-only, but reading, reading community.
Carl, I remember the first year you applied for this, I was out on the board, but I remember there was a long discussion about the applicability of amplified sound, and it was relatively soon after that regulation was created. Have you had, in the last year or two years, any recorded complaints, or do we know of any recorded complaints from neighbors?
The, the only complaints is what, as I mentioned, in terms of a parent saying, you know, Kanye West is not what we want to hear now. You know, something like that, where they're just saying to us, and typically, when we hear it, and for some reason, I just tune out the music.
Sure.
But Jimmy hears it, and you can actually see him running towards the DJ, saying, I want to play Kanye West as it is now. But we've never heard anything from a, a community member coming to, you know, filing anything with Mr. Feudo or the town manager.
Is that true? Is that true? Have you heard tell of any complaints?
No, no complaints.
Nor do I. Bob, is this a permit that you grant?
In the past, the board has made a motion, we didn't put it in there, because it's really the Recreation Committee's purview, and this is more of a courtesy, but if you want to move to approve the amplified sound permit as presented, subject to approval by the Recreation Committee, that'd be fine.
I will so move.
Yeah, and I, just to comment to that, because I happen to have been on the Amplified Sound Committee at the time it was, the ordinance was put together, and I also happened to be present the night that you applied for your first permit to do so. And I think two things are true. One of the things actually was that the, the exception to the rule of amplified sound was that the Board of Selectmen would, would hear, you know, a variance. And so, I was present, not on the board, I was present in the audience the night that you made the application for the first such variance, granted it. And... you made the application for the first such variance, granted it. And I think that the board at that time was very cognizant of amplified sound on a repeating basis. I, as I remember, Carl, this goes on for what, about six weeks or so, or something like that?
We go seven weeks.
Seven, okay. And honestly, I, you know, I think what Carl and Jim Murphy have done is create a great evening activity for families, for kids, and every time we have the opportunity to, you know, make sure that there's more of that going on, we should endorse that. And furthermore, one of the things we, you know, those of, those of us who frequent such events realize that kids are really tuned in, they're kind of amplified now, you know, I mean, they're tuned into the, to the sound, and to the activity, and to the, and to the music, and I think this is a perfect example of applying the variance to an organization that's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing, and I, I say that out loud from my perspective, but I think this is a good thing that we should endorse and, and vote for this evening.
I can't think of any, any other organization that grows seventy percent year-over-year, three years in a row. It's, it's amazing.
Well, it's funny, because one of the problems that we had was after the Fourth of July, we're like, "Oh, my God, we're running out of fields," and we actually opened up, and that's why we're, we're trying to find additional field space. And Mr. Feoto did a very nice job in, in juggling some times around the subcombiator, because we don't want to say no to any.
Fields have always been a problem in this town, and we're always interested in finding the ways to solve that problem.
Do we have motions?
Motion, I forgot, second.
Second. We have a discussion. All those in favor, motion, a lot of the others.
Good luck again.
Thank you.
Karen, uh?
Next on our agenda is a hearing for a change of managers of Chili's Restaurants here in Reading. Is somebody here?
Yeah.
Please. Use yourself.
I'm Ron Harris. From Chili's for nineteen years. I was actually the general manager at the Danvers location for the last seven years, up around there, so I've been dealing with alcohol for a long time, so I haven't never had any issues over the last eight or nine years with anything, since I've been a general manager, so if you guys have any other questions?
Yeah, for the other members of the board, this, this is a hearing for change of manager. Principally involves incidents, past incidents, alcohol, licensing issues, alcohol, serving issues, et cetera.
Very clean record.
Any other discussion by members of the board? Okay, Bob, you have a motion? I'm sorry.
Move the Board of Selectmen to approve the change of manager for Pepper Dining Incorporated, DBA Chili's Grill and Bar, from Ron Dumont to Robert Harris.
Any discussion?
Any second.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
You hear it at seven? Uh, seven-thirty. I caught the tail end of that, I was like, "Whoa."
We have a public hearing notice to read.
To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen is the licensing authority for the town of Reading. Behold a public hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, at seven-thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts. To show cause why Jay and Ricky Incorporated, DBA Ricky's Liquor, retail package store licensed, expose, keep, for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violating GL Chapter One Thirty-Eight, Section Thirty-Four, on July third, two thousand fourteen, to wit, the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under twenty-one years of age. All interested parties may appear in person, may submit their comments in writing, or may email comments to townmanager@ci rewreading dot ma dot U S. By O. Robert W. Lalashere, Tom and Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Detective Mark McHugh. Detective McHugh is going to relay some information to the board of an investigation that he did earlier, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, it was a few weeks, about a month ago, I guess, relating to Ricky's Liquors. And so, a little bit of history there is that we had received some information, anonymous tips, that there have been some sales to underage people at Ricky's Liquors. So as a result, the detective, while working in a patrol shift the particular night, was kind of watching the situation and observed some thing, some, some behavior, and he followed up on it. So he'll relay you the facts of what he observed and the actions he took, and will allege a violation on Ricky's Liquors' parts on sale to an underage individual.
Thank you.
Detective McHugh?
Thank you. As the chief stated, prior to July third, the detective unit received information in regards to Ricky's Liquors selling to underage kids. On July third, I happened to be working a patrol shift in a uniform, in a patrol mar car, and I happened to notice a vehicle pull into Ricky's Liquors parking lot, which consists of a convenience store, pizza shop, and nail salon. The vehicle caught my attention due to the occupants appearing to be teenagers, continued to watch them as the two male rear passengers exit the vehicle and enter Ricky's Liquors. I positioned myself inside the parking lot, where I could maintain visual on the vehicle and on the store. I could see one of the male occupants in the store walking around. I then observed him walk up to the register and then exit carrying a brown paper bag. I observed them walk back to the vehicle and enter the vehicle, at which point, they exited the parking lot and drove northbound on Main Street. At that time, I followed them, and I could observe the female driver continuously looking in her rearview mirror at me. The vehicle then pulled into Burger King parking lot and parked in the front facing Main Street, and all the occupants exited and entered the Burger King. For approximately ten minutes or so, I drugged all four occupants inside Burger King, not purchasing any food, but standing by the exit, looking out toward the Main Street. I believe that they were trying to not get pulled over. About ten, fifteen minutes later, they all exited. One male had a small bag of food. They entered the vehicle, at which point, I pulled to the spot next to them and exited my cruiser and approached the driver and asked to speak with her. At that point, I asked her if I could talk to her, she stated yes. I asked if she was twenty-one, she stated no. I asked, "Anyone in the vehicle is twenty-one?" They stated no. I then directed my attention to the male that I saw in the store. I again asked him if he was twenty-one years old, he stated no. At that point, I began to question him on my observations from within Ricky's Liquors. As I talked to the, the male part, he then admitted that he did buy alcohol from Ricky's Liquors. I asked him how he purchased the alcohol without identification, and the fact that he was under twenty-one years old. He stated to me that it's a known fact that Ricky's Liquors hasn't been carding, and that word of mouth is getting out there, and kids are going there to purchase alcohol. At that point, I removed alcohol from the trunk that was consistent to, of the alcohol that I observed him carrying outside the vehicle. It should be noted that the four occupants were all out, from outside of town, they were from Medford, away from here. At that point, I seized the evidence and advised all the occupants of the criminal charges to, that will be coming. On July eighth, I then followed up with the Ricky's Liquors and the store owner and the employee that was working that night. I advised them of the situation. I asked if I could speak, see their surveillance videos of that night. I then assisted the manager, or excuse me, the owner of the store, with narrowing down the timeframe of July third, whether the purchase was made. During that time, I observed the male that I charged, entered the store, purchased alcohol, and then exited the store without identifying himself. At that point, I requested a copy of these surveillance videos, at which, as of today, we have not received.
Your, is that the extent of your prepared comments? Do you have any other, anything else to say?
That, that's all.
Your prepared, your written comments suggest that you asked, I can't find it here, you asked one of the individuals how long he'd been doing this, and he had remarked how long?
Approximately a month.
And was that taken to be, he'd done it multiple times, right?
Yes.
Any other questions from other members of the board?
Yes, it's, and this is second-hand, part of what I'm going to need to note tonight, is this a real pattern of, of a problem, or is this maybe something that just started to happen? What I'd really like to know is if you've had, will you have had any opportunity to review those surveillance tapes for other dates and times to see if you noticed a pattern? Is that beyond the scope of what you can do? Is that getting into search and seizure? Because I, I'd like to know if this is a pattern, other than just the say-so of this kid. I mean, it carries some weight with it, but I'd really like to know if this is a, a month-long problem.
Without knowing who's actually purchasing the alcohol, we don't know if they're twenty-one or not.
Yeah, would be difficult.
Have you done compliance checks at this site before?
No.
So has this site ever received a, never since inception, it's never been checked?
No, I don't believe so. They, they were just recently licensed.
Correct.
And I don't believe that we did compliance checks since they've been licensed. However, I believe when they were first licensed and opened, I believe that we did go and make a face-to-face introduction and advised, you know, about the regulations and things like that. Normally, we'd do that with new license holders.
How long ago was that, chief? Is it, it lasted six months?
I believe they were, they probably asked, when was the license issued?
Four years.
It's been a year already?
The actual, you know, the actual...
I beg your...
June twenty-fourth, I believe, of thirteen.
So thirteen, at least. Did any of the other occupants make reference to independently having visited the store? Was it that single individual?
Just that single individual.
Any other comments you remember with the board? What latitude, what latitude do we have here? I've seen the comments in terms of...
I think you should hear from the floor.
I would like to hear. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Coleman, on behalf of Ricky's Liquors. Today, we have with me tonight the owner, Cal Patel, as well as Bruce Armstrong, who was the clerk working on that evening of the July third. We've heard the, I've heard the comments of the detective, and we had an opportunity to read the report. There's no question that selling alcohol to minors is, is dangerous, and there's no excuse for that. There's no excuse for not checking anybody's ID, ever. Ricky's Liquors knows they've made a mistake here, and they know there's going to be repercussions as a result of that. We don't question any of that. Part of my concern for coming here tonight was the implication of some of the things that I read in the report might reflect badly on Ricky's Liquors. And like you said, some of that is the word of the one individual and potentially hearsay. I mean, if there, if the anonymous tips were coming in, I don't, this is in the court, so I'm not trying to challenge too much here, but if the, if the anonymous tips came in on the twenty-sixth, there's a lot of time between the twenty-sixth and the third to be checking this out, so I don't know why it had just happened to be on the third, this actually happened. But, you know, I think there are some mitigating factors that the board should take into consideration. But one is Mr. Patel, who's the manager of record, has operated a convenience store, JK's Market, in this town for twenty years. He hasn't had any complaints or that I'm aware of, and they sell cigarettes and his ID's checked in that instance, so I haven't, I'm not aware of any. On the day of the infraction, please don't take this as, this is kind of an excuse for anything, it's an explanation. July third, before Fourth of July, at seven or eight o'clock at night, is zero hour, I think, for liquor stores. And Mr. Armstrong told me that a couple of stores in the area may have closed down early before nine o'clock to let some of their employees to go. So it made the, the traffic in there even worse, and I think the detective will, won't disagree with it, there was a lot of people in there. Mr. Patel was working that day, he just didn't happen to be there at that time, so Mr. Armstrong was there by himself. He was there at six o'clock, and he came back at night. The infraction happened in the interim. I don't want you to think that this also was a case of somebody who appeared noticeably underage. I mean, if you see somebody who appears very young come in there, and they don't card them, yeah, it's a big problem. It's a big problem you don't card anybody, but especially is more problematic when the person looks like they're underage. Minor in this instance was six-four, twenty years old, and looked older. So for whatever that's worth, we're, we're factoring in a lot of circumstances here, a busy night, an older-looking person who's very tall. I also don't want you to think that Mr. Armstrong is the only person who works in the store. He's the only employee, but that doesn't mean he's the only person that works in there. Mr. Patel and his wife spend fifty or sixty hours in his store a week, as well as Mr. Armstrong. He's got experience, he's a, has been a CVS store manager for many, many years, and has checked IDs before, again, in relation to sales of cigarettes, not alcohol, but I think we're dealing with responsible people here. They are taking some remedial steps, I want you to be aware of, so they intend this incident not to recur. Mr. Armstrong just completed his tip training, he probably should have had that before his behind-the-counter, but that's another matter. He has completed his tip training, I think that's only going to assist him, or being able to check IDs more efficiently, more for checking. They're hiring a fourth person to work in there, which I think is going to alleviate some of the problem with the rush that you had on July third, which I think was a very unusual set of circumstances. And Mr. Patel tells me tonight that he's going to be investing about four grand into what's called a check ID machine, I'm not sure they're familiar with it, but it's, it's a lot of money to put in there, a lot of places don't have those because of the, it's cost prohibitive. But apparently, it's very effective in checking fake IDs, giving the age without having to look very closely at the, at the numbers that are on there. So I think we're dealing with serious people here who are responsible. I don't think we, I, I wouldn't want you to take the word of one individual that this is a free-for-all. One other point, they've never seen, and I talked to them, Mr. Armstrong, who saw the minor that night, he'd never seen him in the store before. Mr. Patel and his wife also checked the, the video, never seen that minor in the store before. So while he says he was there, they have no recollection, recollection of that. So would be happy to answer any questions, myself or, or the two, please.
Is there a reason Mr. Armstrong did not receive tip training prior to being put on the job?
I wasn't, I didn't represent them at the time of their application, so my, my usual advice, I think, would be for them to have done that.
And will the new clerk have had it before he or she begins?
Absolutely. Or surf saver, or safe surfer, whatever, the equivalent of alcohol training with it.
Comments, favor, or the board?
I, I've got a couple of questions, though. Whether you were representing him or not at the time, I guess I would ask you, Mr. Patel, why was your employee not properly trained in accordance with the way that we have an expectation in this town?
I'm trying to find out where to get it, and a couple times, we missed it, they were in meetings somewhere else, in the marble or anywhere else. And he worked for me like a part-time, then he got it in the full-time, in the beginning, and I didn't get it. Then we figured out we can do the online, we didn't know. Then I figured out we can do the online, and we did it.
Can I comment? I was working both the CVS job in Stone, in Redstone, and I have to go through a lot of classes there for licenses and IDs, so I was working only, I was working full-time there, and then coming to help Cal part-time at night. We weren't sure how long I was going to stay there, because I already had a business job. So it wasn't until January that, oh, this year, that I decided to go full-time. No excuse why I...
So from January to July third, there wasn't one time where you could take a training that we prescribe, which is conditional to licenses that are, that you're currently holding for us? Just, so, I mean, that's, that's a little bit mysterious to me. Another question that I do have, I, I wonder, you know, a request has been made now several weeks ago by the local police department for a copy of the surveillance video that they, why that hasn't been produced?
Mr. Charles, I talked to him about that, and I asked whether or not that had been taken care of. And I'm probably maybe the least tech-person, capable person in this room probably right now, but what I'm told is that they've had some difficulty, without a laptop, and they're trying to transfer it to something else. Cal, maybe you can explain the difficulty that you had?
We did the USB, and I told him, if he, if he knows, he can do it too. But he don't know either, so we didn't do it, and I tried to do it, but I put in a USB that comes out, and then I go to the laptop, I cannot...
I, I think if my license was...
Get it back, you know.
I would find somebody that could do this professionally and do it yesterday. You know, I mean...
I offered him, if he know, he can do it too, you know? We both tried to do it, but somehow, they didn't.
John's getting it. There's a certain lack of urgency, both in the events leading up, which is the tip training, and the events subsequent, which is the production of the video, that tend to undermine the argument about resolution of the problem. You know, I'd be, I'd be all over that, because my business, continuing business is at risk, my reputation is at risk.
My reputation is at risk, and my representations to being interested in solving the problem in some way are colored by the speed and completeness of my response. It just doesn't, on the surface, look like it's a big deal.
Any other questions from members of the board? Marcy?
I'm curious to know if you and your wife also have had tip's training, if you're working there. So, you've both taken tip's training, and I heard you say that the other person that you're hiring would have tip's training or something else. Is that acceptable from our standards? That, I've heard people talk about tips. I haven't heard about the other programs. Is that an acceptable, reasonable? I would say that it absolutely has to happen before the person starts working, before they start working, if that's required. But I agree, there's a lack of urgency, it seems, in this.
Yeah, there's two parts to problem resolution, containment correction. It's been contained, but I don't see the correction.
And this is July 3rd?
Well, since, he has taken the training, so they are taking steps. I think it's a, just a technical issue with that. In fact, we're not questioning, the police already have seen the tapes. They came down and they viewed them.
Sure.
So, they've seen them all already. They've seen what they want to see. We'd be happy to provide back tapes if we have them to address your other concerns. But I understand the point. I've been talking to them. I can tell you, it's not a lack of urgency. They're very discerning about this.
As you know, Reading has a tremendous focus on substance abuse, starting at the earliest levels in our schools and continuing hopefully with lessons that are followed through life. The single largest abused drug, at least when I was a teenager, was alcohol. I don't know that it's changed. I think the popularity of other alternatives is only growing. And we take a really dim view of it, because it sends a message to the kids as to how serious the adults are. We had the latitude to impose a cessation of business, a delay of business, for some number of days.
Up to including revocation.
And what strikes me in this case, if the comments of the individual are to be believed, is that this was not his first visit to the facility, that he didn't even live in Reading, which implies he hadn't been told. That's, that's an implication, but he wouldn't have known by living in the town. And so, this reputation, or this knowledge, had apparently become known to him, other than being a resident of the town. To me, that's an aggravating circumstance, in that we're all busy. I'm busy in my world. And tonight, I quoted a chapter and verse, and my table town councilor has corrected me. We all make mistakes.
I'm not going to whip that down, am I?
Take mistakes seriously. And you're not the first to have failed a compliance check. What's aggravating in this circumstance to me is it's not a compliance check issued by the town of Reading. It's an individual saying, "Yeah, I did it, and I've done it before, and I live in Medford or I live in Wakefield." So, the implications are, it's a, not a one-off, but it's the first discovery of what might be considered a trend or a pattern. And to me, that, that's an aggravating factor in my assessment.
We're really putting a lot of faith and stock in a young individual's word and statement under a very stressful situation. There's no other evidence, other than that statement.
I mean, I wouldn't, I just wouldn't, I'd consider the totality of the situation, and factor that in at the same time.
You're citing circumstantial things.
Yeah, and I think that's where I'm coming from. I understand that, you know, if I'm 20 years old and I'm being questioned by a police officer, and I know I'm in trouble, yeah, okay, I'm liable to say whatever I'm liable to say. I get that. However, what Mr. Arenas pointed out is very interesting. First of all, there's, there's an anonymous tip that comes in that has some basis, because, you know, when the detective decides to, you know, in a fairly short order, take a, just a look and see what's going on, he immediately sees this happening. It kind of corroborates the fact that there's, there's a tip that comes in. And the fact that we've got out-of-town kids that show up, I mean, they show up for a reason. They didn't select this place because it had the best sale going on. I guarantee you that. And the circumstantial issues here are not small. And, you know, I mean, there's a series of things here that cause me great concern. A six-month delay, and then, you know, and then a violation is what causes the tip's training to be engaged with this employee. Unacceptable. Cooperation with the police and trying to understand, you know, exactly what happened by being able to take the documentation that they viewed with you and have it in their hands for their use in the prosecution of this case. Again, three weeks goes by, nothing happens, and the, I mean, and I'm hearing that, you know, the owner is prepared to spend $4,000 for an ID checker, but, you know, is not willing to get an IT person to come in and download a surveillance tape to provide to the local police. Cooperation with the local police is really important, as far as I'm concerned, as one of the people that looks at these licenses being issued. And frankly, you know, it's a bit insulting to hear that on July 3rd, this happened, that because it's a busy night at a liquor store, that's okay. That causes me great concern.
It was an explanation, not an excuse, Mr. Armstrong. I understand.
But even tonight, your comments about being 6'4", I got carded at Chili's. There's no doubt I'm not under the age of 20. And they do that, I think, to force compliance on the part of the employee, to remove any judgment. So, you even cite that tonight as a contributing factor. That's exactly why the carding is not subjective. It's objective. You do it all the time. There maybe are some extreme circumstances, but, Chief, you said in your opening remarks that there were tips plural. Was there more than one tip provided?
Yes.
Do you have the background and the dates or the...
I'm not sure. How many did we get on the text tip thing? Do you remember? I know, I know I received one verbally from a person in town, probably about a week before the text to tip, tip had come in.
So, there's two that you can...
Two that I know.
How long was that one prior to the violation?
I'm sorry?
How long was the text to tip before the violation?
Sounds like a week.
I believe about a week.
So, just, just tonight from the police, we've got two independent, unrelated references, and a third discovery. That's not an accident. You'd have to be incredibly unlucky to have three reports in a short interval of time, and have those be the only instances. That, that's beyond the law of chance. That is a trend, and that's what I meant by aggravating circumstance. Any other comments from the members of the board?
You know, one of the only comments I'd make, well, actually, I'd like to add one quick question from Detective. You were able to review the tapes of that evening, July 3rd, but you didn't look backwards to see, to corroborate that he said that you'd been doing it for about a month?
No.
Okay.
They were having difficulty, difficulty with, with the surveillance tapes. It took us a while just to narrow it down, July 3rd, and the times were off, so it took a while just to get what I needed that day.
Okay. I mean, that's, to me, that would be some interesting information to have, to see, to, to, as you say, to corroborate whether he was saying that just to get himself off the hook, or if he was actually out there doing it and had done it several times. The, the other interesting thing, as I'm looking over some past violations in town, not with you, of course, we understand this is your first time, there certainly continues to be a little bit of a trend in violations around town. And it's, the troubling thing to me is the signals keep getting thrown out there that this is absolutely not going to be accepted, but it continues to happen. That troubles me just, just personally. It has nothing to do with you. It's just the trend from the past as well. But I would be interested to, certainly to have, to corroborate whether this individual was actually telling the truth about more instances than just the one that they got caught for.
Marcy?
I have to say, I find, I would be surprised if I were in a situation such as this, and I was being questioned by the police, I would only say that it was the first time I had been there. I did not volunteer. I've been more than one time. It seems, it seems counterintuitive to me that that would be something they would throw out. Either way, I think that the situation is there's been no training, there's been two anonymous tips, there's been one person caught, and I think just going with that, you know, it's definitely troubling situation.
Jeff?
I have a last question. How long is your license to sell alcohol valid in Reading?
This one's due...
June 24th.
2015. It was just written.
So, it's, so it's about, it's about a little over a year, about 13 months.
Any other comments from Ricky's Liquors or council? Robert, what's the recourse here?
You have in your policy as a first offense, which this is, from a verbal warning, if you will, to a three-day suspension, that's your latitude.
That's been our policy, but that's not, we're not limited in that.
You are limited.
That's what the policy is.
Well, I guess technically.
You like the word, you like the word, no.
Policies are policies, until they're regarded.
Well, the policy says the penalties listed in the policy are only a guide. The licensing authority may use its discretion in determining whether the facts surrounding a violation warrant a penalty which is more lenient or severe than the, than that suggested by the guidelines.
Is there a history?
No, that's right.
Jeff, there's not a, there's not a...
Ready to close?
Yeah.
I'm going to move that the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on the possible modifications.
Hang on, hang on, Dan.
Sorry.
Procedurally, we close the hearing before we...
Before we ask for... Do you have to ask for public comment on this?
I'll be sure if they have anything else, if there's anything else that you'd like...
Of anybody that should...
Oh, anybody, right.
Public comment.
Yeah, that's true.
With the Board of Selectmen, close the hearing on the possible modification, suspension, or revocation of the retail package store license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages for J. and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquor, 214 Main Street, for violating MGL Chapter 138, Section 34, for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Move the Board of Selectmen find J. and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquor, 214 Main Street, Reading, in violation of MGL Chapter 138, Section 34, for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age on July 3rd, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five, zero. Now, the discussion.
Entertain a sense of the board first.
What were people's heads? A volunteer opinion, just to size it. What's, what are the contributing circumstances here? There's at least three reference points that are unrelated, independent, and I can't speak if they're factual, but if they're not, it's a really unfortunate circumstance.
Well, one of them's factual, for sure.
One of them's factual.
Mitigating, the owner has a clean record with his other business to this point, with this business.
But I go back to those three indicated being a trend and not an isolated event, which is normally what you would conclude with a compliance check, because there are no complaints, and it's our attempt to force the question. I'm inclined to do something greater than what we would normally do for a first offense under those circumstances.
I would also.
What's the rest of the...
I'm thinking five days.
My initial would be 34 days, which is just about the minimum, because I do think that it probably qualifies for that. And then, I would say that we probably would request that perhaps there are some compliance checks done along the way, so that we can kind of keep up on this, because I think it needs to be taken very seriously. I think we need to have some very clear indication that that's happening.
Kevin?
Yeah, I was tossing up between the three and the five days.
I will say, the folks you see on here who've had five days had two prior violations that were, you know, so I just think we need to not jump too far ahead in terms of, you know, sorry.
No.
I jumped to end.
Anything else, Kevin?
Four is in the middle of that range.
Yeah, four is in the middle of that range. I would be fine with four days.
All right, four. Jeff?
This is very troubling to me. This is a very troubling set of circumstances. I've been present in this room when a number of these other local businesses have been found in violation and penalized. And those circumstances were, a violation is a violation. They seem, the circumstances seem to be somewhat different here than they were in the others. Frankly, I will just say out loud, the fact that it's, over a year has gone by without a compliance check is a problem. You know, and I just say that because I wish that we did that more often. I think it's a really important part of our substance program here in town, and so, you know, the fact that there has not been a compliance check here, I mean, it just causes me, it causes me some problems. And I will tell you, I mean, I think that there are some other mitigating circumstances here that, that also trouble me, that we spend this long without tip's training, which is, we're very clear about, you know, when we issue licenses here, what the expectation is, and that's been ignored. You know, our local police department asks for some assistance in the prosecution of a crime, and we get, you know, kind of a half-hearted, you know, support for them. That causes me a problem. And, you know, I do realize that we have to look at policy to a certain extent. I know we're not bound by the policy, but I think, you know, it's reasonable. I think, Marcy, you do make a good point that, you know, the only five-day suspension in recent, actually in 10 years has tied to, you know, a company that had a total of three violations. So, it probably, in keeping with a sense of fairness, you know, maybe four is the right, I mean, it's, it steps up over, you know, the minimum, and I hope sends a message, because I, I will tell you this. If I'm on this board, and there's another violation, I'm going to vote to suspend your license permit. That would be my position. This is, this is serious business, in my mind. We've got a substance problem in this town. It starts with alcohol. We've got many licenses issued here, and this is, this is to be taken seriously. And in my mind, I would, I would vote for four days, and I would be, and I just will say, point it, that if I was to see this business in here again, it would be my recommendation to suspend and revoke their license. However, given that this is actually a first offense, I would, I would vote in favor of a four-day suspension.
Thanks. Dan?
Yeah, I'm okay with four.
Read the motion.
I'd like to, well, let's do that first. Move that J. and Ricky Incorporated DBA Ricky's Liquor, 214 Main Street, Reading, be penalized with a four-day suspension for violation of MGL Chapter 138, Section 34, for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age on July 3rd, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marcy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Raise your hand. Five, zero.
You may want to ask if they have.
Yeah, is there, is there a, when would you propose to serve that four-day suspension? Is there a date you have in mind?
Prefer it would be September 15, 16, 17, 18, consecutive.
16, 17, 18. And Bob, could you go over the procedure for surrendering the license?
What's the day of the week on the 15th?
It's a Monday.
You would need to surrender the license to the town manager's office generally either fall or at 4:00, 9:00 o'clock on the 15th, and then come and pick it up on the day you're eligible to be restated, which would be a little tricky. We might have to arrange it with the police department this Friday.
Do they have to post some signage that they're suspended?
And then, there will be some signage.
So, they're told to hold your...
Be in touch with you.
It's in the motion.
Okay, got it.
So, pick up the license rather than going to town hall since we're closed on Friday. Probably send you to the police department, and that would be approximately 9:00, 9:00 morning, probably Friday.
Read the motion there?
Sure. Move the four... Move the four-day suspension for Jay and Ricky Incorporated DBA Ricky's Liquor, 214 Main Street, Reading, take place on September 15, 16, 17, and 18, 2014, that the license be surrendered to the office of the town manager no later than 9:00 a.m. the first day of the suspension, to be returned to the licensee by 9:00 a.m. the first day following the suspension, and that a plaque could be placed on the premises during the period of suspension indicating the business is unable to sell liquor due to a suspension of the liquor license for sale of liquor to an underage person, and that Jay and Ricky, Inc. reimbursed the town for running for constable and advertising fees. And this decision, including the designation of the dates of suspension, was rendered on the basis of Kalpish Patel's waiver of appeal.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Kevin Sexton will second. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much for coming tonight. It doesn't bring us any joy to do this, believe me. We welcome business into the town, and it's with a sense of regret that we have to do this, but it's what's dictated. Thank you very much for coming.
We hope you'll see this guy here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
What we have at this point is the continuation of a hearing for a proposed four-way stop sign at the intersection of Sunnyside and Fairview. The proponent of the proposed four-way stop, I understand, is not available this evening.
Correct.
And since the original hearing, several of our members, I think, have gone and moved to night, Ray.
Good night.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, you're very welcome.
Ray's going to see you.
Several of our members have personally visited. Unfortunately, I was not able to make it, but one of our members was kind enough to take some...
I came that way this evening. On my way here.
I got stamps.
So maybe just briefly go around the room for those who did visit and their observations.
Yeah, I visited after the last hearing, because I had heard that they had done some bush trimming at the time. So I think I visited maybe about four or five days after that, and to my surprise, when I got in there, the bush trimming was a bush removal.
Yeah, well, there's a trimming.
It was originally trimmed and then it was removed.
So I sat pretty far back behind the stop line as you were traveling, what's one of the two streets, Fairview, as you were traveling down Fairview to Sunnyside. And really, the sightline at that point, I can imagine with the bush was tough, but the sightline really was a non-issue once this bush was removed.
Do you know where it's going? Or this is Fairview?
That's facing towards...
That's looking south on Sunnyside, where the cones are. Cones are on Sunnyside looking south.
Yeah.
And that's the opposite.
So there were bushes at that corner.
This is, that's where I was just referencing, where I was stopped, well before the stop.
That's heading eastbound on Fairview, looking at the right turn on the Sunnyside.
Right.
And I believe the point of contention was those bushes where you see the ground.
Right there.
But that has really opened up the sightline, so anybody coming up to that stop can clearly see the graphic. Well done. You can almost see the next street sign on Sunnyside.
In fact, as I was coming to the intersection, there was a pedestrian who was over where the, would have been behind the bushes, passing through it. It was very easy to see them coming.
I took pictures the other way, too, and it was always clear that way.
Did anybody get a sense from the person who brought this forward that they actually are now okay?
He just said he was unable to attend tonight. He didn't make any other comments.
For those who might forget, he wasn't able to attend the original hearing that opened this question, so...
And you delayed it so that he couldn't be here.
For that purpose, correct. And two thoughts from myself. One is, I think the issue's been mitigated to my satisfaction, and my reason to have continued the meeting at first is while we're governed by practice and policy, circumstances on the ground always have to apply and be taken into consideration, and these warranted doing so. I think they've been since mitigated, so I'd be inclined to close the hearing and wait and see if the applicant was...
I'll take care of the action.
So, is that the sense of the board?
Is there anybody here who has public comment?
Well, we have the hearing open. Any comments?
These folks are all tuckered out of that historical commission session.
All right, hearing done. Move that the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on the proposed four-way stop at Sunnyside and Fairview Avenue.
Second half.
Okay, all those in favor? Five zero.
Intend to make more further motions.
Correct.
Some other board member wants to...
All right. And Bob, you have a presentation on complete streets. Jesse, go.
Start with Jesse Wilson.
So before you tonight, we have the final draft of the bike and ped plan that we've been working on for the past year, as well as a final draft complete streets policy. We do have MAPC here, they're going to do the presentation, and we'll be able to answer any questions that you have. I also have, in case you don't have, a couple copies of the plan and the complete streets policy, so those are available if you want to look at them. So with that, I'm going to let Chris do the presentation. And I think we have a clicker. Actually, you can do your place.
I've got it on my screen.
If it's what we have in the packet, we have it.
It's what we have on our screen.
Yeah.
You can either sit here or...
Thanks for having me back again.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm also here with my colleague Sarah, so at the end, we can hopefully answer some questions that you have.
I'm sorry, you are Chris.
I'm Chris, yeah. So what we're going to do is cover sort of the two parts that I know we've introduced before. There's the policy side, it sort of sets the vision, and then the plan that gets into sort of our recommendations from the pedestrian, as well as the bicycle network. So I think we start with the complete street side as a reminder of sort of just what the definition of what a complete street is, sort of this very general, simple definition. It's, a complete street is one that is safe, it's comfortable, it's accessible for all users, sort of emphasizing, so when we say all users, the needs of children, the needs of elderly, the needs of the stable population, and for multiple movements of travel. So in addition to cars, and I emphasize it's not sort of taking away cars, but in addition, sort of what can make it safer for people who aren't walking, who are biking, people taking the bus, so people accessing the commuter rail stop. So we've had, in a little bit less than a year now, we've had a bunch of communities that have adopted these local policies. Last all, I guess there was no one right now, as you can see, there's a strong handful. The one update from this presentation is, as of last night, Act and Board of Selectmen voted to adopt the complete streets policy that we've been working on, which is, it's very similar to the ones you have for this town as well. And so we're continuing to work currently with Dan Rose Beverly in Middleton, which should all be happening, hopefully going up for adoption within the next couple of months, and then there's a couple other communities as well that we're a little bit sort of earlier on in the process with. So in terms of what the policy is, I think, sort of a few highlights, one of the important things, especially in the town of Reading, is really, you're already doing a lot of this stuff, especially with the pedestrian side, but also with the bicycle side, and so this sort of this policy really, it sort of codifies what's already happening in a lot of many respects. And so if, for example, if, let's say, the town engineer leaves, so when the new town engineer comes, he sort of knows like what the town's sort of vision and prerogative is with relation to these types of initiatives. So it sets this general vision, how's the town sort of consider complete streets, given sort of the other constraints that might exist, whether it's something sort of just practical, like, well, you have such a narrow right of way that you couldn't put a sidewalk in here even if you wanted to, as well as sort of financial considerations. If it's just too expensive, then that's another example of what would sort of be an exception. The policy contains a number of resources to refer to, some are sort of very design-specific about what best practices are. Some of, one of the resources is the bike plan, so that the town sort of knows, like, to refer to the bike plan when thinking about prioritizing bicycle or pedestrian amenities. It's intended to create sort of this overall sort of incremental change, so it's not meant to flip the switch and start tomorrow that everything's going to change, it's just over time, additional sort of improvements to town we made. And again, like I said, it allows for exceptions, and then finally, it sort of sets the town up for this complete street certification legislation, if that funding becomes available, which I talked about last time, and I'll refresh your memory in a minute about that. It's not intended to be sort of a specific design prescription, so every case is different on every road, and so it takes that into account. Like I said, it's just a more of a general vision, so in that respect, it's not a requirement for a specific type or any bicycle or pedestrian facility on every single road. We also realize that the primary purpose of a road is to get from point A to point B, and so, and this isn't intended to sort of replace that, it's sort of just an additional thing that, again, if there's the room to put a sidewalk or sidewalks need repairing, to sort of consider that when you're doing roadway reconstruction. So I put here, this is an, sort of a way that I sort of, I think the policy's intended to work. This sort of, I broke into three general types of projects that might occur. One type is sort of your routine project, so this is when you're just doing a simple repaving and you're going to restripe it. So the way the process would work for these types of projects, it's very similar to the way things would go now, the town engineer along with the PTTF. Did I have to get a T there? They would get together, talk with the street, look at the sort, the bike plan, et cetera, and as well as the other resources, and see if there are opportunities, again, given the constraints, to include some of these recommendations that would be sort of best practices for complete streets elements. And then either they would include them as appropriate, or they would sort of exempt it because it's, for whatever reason, it's not a possibility at least at this time. Kind of moving over to sort of a larger project, so these are things that might be sort of like an intersection redesign. Here, the PTTF, TF, would work in con, I'm going to stop saying that acronym, would work in conjunction with the appropriate parties, whether it's Mastod or whomever, a developer, et cetera, make sort of recommendations, and at that point, it would come in front of, if there were, let's say, exceptions that were requested, it would come to the Board of Selectmen, or a designated of the Board of Selectmen to determine whether an exception is valid. For other projects, so it's just things that would come, for example, subdivisions, or if something's coming up, a site plan review, those regulations exist, and those obviously would supersede this as a policy. And so one of the sort of implementation steps of the PTTTF is to look at these regulations.
Can you just explain what that is? Because the PTTF is what?
That is the Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force, which contains members of safety officers, town engineer. Come on. Sorry.
We might rename it.
In keeping with...
I'm always forgetting names.
Or just call it...
And so this group would sort of look at these regulations, when things come up on the F time, make sort of recommendations about ways that they could be updated in order to include complete streets elements. Just a simple example might be, I don't know what the subdivision regulations look like, but maybe to say, well, maybe you should require sidewalks on all cul-de-sacs, et cetera. And so then, if they're updated, then the town, the developers, will follow those rules as when they are updated. So the complete street state legislation, this is a certification program that's fifty, authorized for $50 million over the next five years, $10 million a year to provide certified communities with funding for planning and implementation of these types of elements. Right now, it was included in transportation bond bill, which the governor signed off on. Mastod and the government has not made a final decision on what's happening with the money, if they're going to release part of it, some of it, any of it. MAPC is continuing to sort of advocate, obviously, for this. I think so, the point, if you have the policy, that's one of the main criteria, and so it's sort of just already pushed you ahead of the game, that when, if, when this online is released, being able to access...
When was it authored?
It was signed, maybe within the last couple months, yeah. So that's the policy side, so switching gears a little bit to the bicycle pedestrian plan. So this is sort of building upon a lot of the work that the town's already been doing from previous studies to the actual implementation of the redesign of the downtown area, as well as the inclusion of bicycling on Hayrow Street. And so what MAPC, Sarah and I, and our colleagues did, we looked at sort of creating, the purpose was to create sort of a network over time of bicycle facilities that are on the road, as well as looking at some potential off-road connections that could be created over the longer term within the community, and then looking at some specific areas to sort of really drill down for the pedestrian side, ways to sort of improve the pedestrian experience and the safety of pedestrians. Those areas were really looking at mainly schools, as well as little downtown, a little bit because, but it's already been recently done, looking at Walkers Brook Road and a few other areas as well that the town sort of decided were sort of the high priority In terms of the process, I think the main takeaway is, we began this last fall, we've done extensive outreach, I believe many of some of the stakeholders that we've spoken to are here in the room tonight, and so this was really intended to be sort of an iterative process where we came up with sort of plans where we didn't do things in the act, but really took into account the town's input. So from the bicycle side, we looked, the recommendations are mainly looking for opportunities where you can include bicycle lanes, or in some cases, shared lane markings or signs. There were approximately the potential for eight and a half miles of bicycle lanes within the town, just within today's existing roadway width, that could be included throughout the network. And then we provided sort of an allocation of how we would see sort of the travel lanes, parking lanes, bicycle lanes, et cetera, for all these roadway segments, which is all included in the report. So an example, this is on West Street, so it's 31 and a half feet, and you can see at the shoulders, and there's the travel lanes, 12 feet and 13 feet, at least at the segment, and so the way that the plan would look is, when these areas are repaved and striped, without changing the curb to curb, it's just simply reallocating where the paint falls. And so there's the space to have 11-foot lanes, or 10 and a half foot lane, and then five-foot bicycle lanes. And there's some flexibility within that as well, that's sort of my deal, it's a five-foot bike lane, but I believe you can go down as narrow as four feet, it's still be a bicycle lane, so there's some flexibility there.
So just a quick question. When they get to the paving phase of West Street, will they be showing this as their 25% design? Is that the going-in design? They're going to look, make it look...
I don't know what they've actually decided, but that's, that would be a revelation.
I believe where this is a state project, we can ask, but we can't insist.
Yep.
And just as somewhat of an aside, but it's on this part of the point, the department had met with Senator Lewis a couple of months ago and just asked him, you know, what are the interesting things you have to say? This is one of the first things he said was, adopt a complete streets policy because, you know, I don't care whether you like it or not, if you like it, there's lots of money right now, five years from now, there won't be, because no one's in now. So they're looking to give money away, assuming it all gets, goes that way. I asked them if we applied to something like this, because there's a local share, and the answer is I doubt it. Doesn't mean this can't be designed this way, but I doubt it's going to replace our obligation on that project, because it's already too far along. But it is absolutely available for future.
And in practice, if you had a project where you wanted to apply it, that funding, you'd have to segregate out the fraction of the project that is that scope of work, the striping only, for example?
I'm not sure you do. I think it's just, here's, you know, X amount of dollars as part of your project, you know, we like the fact you're doing that.
Is this in reference to the certification part, in terms of the money?
Yeah.
And then there's, the certification has some sort of measures that they want you to sort of somehow track your progress.
What's your, I'm going to get to this in a minute. I was in Somerville over the weekend doing some, picking up some material, and the streets were laid out so that it was the curb on street parking and a bike lane to the left, adjacent to what would be the driver's door. And having never been in that situation before, I almost collided with a bike rider that was coming over my left shoulder. So I looked, oncoming traffic, no, I didn't even see the bike rider, because you don't expect to see them. It's kind of what motorcyclists complain about, except we're all familiar with motorcyclists. And to what degree does it take to retrain, or do you have, is there experience when you've employed these things where it takes some amount of exposure or retraining for the populations?
Sure, throughout the process, we've definitely stated that education is a huge part of it. There's, I think, a lot of training that we've been pushing for with the R and B, just about how to put on your seatbelt, when you unplug your seatbelt, that you look over your shoulder when you get out of the car to avoid drawing people. It is a process, but definitely, at least for us, you know, working in Boston with the network that has gone in, like the first bike lane that went in, nobody really knew what it was, or what it meant, and shared lanes as well, like the little, you know, figures on the road, people didn't know what they were. And it's just kind of one of those things, the more you see it, the more you get used to it, and people get educated that way. But we would definitely recommend an education process here in the town as part of it as well.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Chief, have you had any issues on Hayrow? Does that situation exist on a small part of Hayrow?
Yeah, no, we have, no issues. We're all fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other note. A lot of the areas that we found that bike lanes could fit in the existing curb layout or roadway layout, are areas that do not have parking currently, like Hayrow Street. So not every, not all of these eight and a half miles are areas great adjacent to what... So not every, not all of these eight and a half miles are areas where adjacent to, to a parking lane, actually, I think very few of them are, so.
So I'll show the zoomed in version. This is sort of the townwide view of what the plan sort of looks like, but it's, this sense, the idea is that the, the blue dash lines are the proposed bicycle lanes of where, what could fit today, except with a couple of exceptions, I mean, which I'll explain. And then connecting that are some areas where, because the, there's not enough width for bicycle lanes, so that's where you have to either put the shared lane markings, the section I was just talking about, or signs for those, sort of, to those connections. The red areas that are circled are areas that are sort of some challenging intersections that should be looked at further in terms of making sure that they're, when they're redesigned.
Speaking of challenges, one of the things, I was in Somerville, was the big rotary by Trapps.
Yeah.
There's all bike lanes in it. It's the most confusing. How would you do, would you propose to do the 128 rotary? Where 129 goes into Wakefield.
Is which one?
You have two circles there, is that what you're proposing?
Yes. We have put some recommendations, we, just generally that those should be looked at for our safety. We have put in detailed recommendations for redesigning it. I live near the Trapps building, and it's extremely dangerous and challenging, but luckily they're planning on getting rid of that rotary once they get the money to redesign.
They're going to put in the overpass again?
No, we're actually going to make it a grid, more of a grid, street pattern, and they're going to use the resulting process to actually develop it, but. So zooming in, as you can see, there exists right now on Haverhill Street, the bicycle lane. Coming to the north part of that, there's, right now, there's just some signs that say to share the road. Based upon our measurements, we think that it's still within Mastod's guidance, that you could still fit travel lanes with bicycle lanes, so that's, that was our recommendation, but it is at least something right now. And you can see the, I forget which street it is, up here, that it was sort of, a lot of the residents wanted to, some sort of connection, but there's not the right of way to make a bicycle lane, so this is the type of situation where the town could put up signs, just to sort of alert the drivers, or, or possibly armchair lane markings in these areas. On Main Street, there has been some discussion about potentially having a lane diet, so where it's four lanes, going down to maybe three lanes, or something, depending upon what the, the analysis finds. If something like that happens, then the resulting space would have enough room for bicycle lanes, and so this plan just reflects that, that if that happens, you can do bicycle lanes.
This is on North Main Street?
Yes, yes, this is.
Is there any kind of a philosophy that?
No, that's not what he's saying. He's saying that there'd be a diet there, too.
There, too. Potentially. That's a, like a secondary phase, I think. It would be south between Hopkins and the tracks.
So the plan isn't recommending, they say, if that happens, then you'll have the room to do the bike lanes.
Is there any sense that if you have alternate routes like Caverhill and West, which provides, in my opinion, a much safer venue for biking, that you fully employ those with the bike lanes?
Dedicate those as bikes.
As opposed to restricted traffic on Main Street? And I'm not trying to be misunderstood here, I'm forgetting the bikers to where they need to go, but I'm for their safety, too.
Sure.
The thought of them co-biking on Main Street.
Some bikers will want to take the most direct route, and so if.
Without a doubt, yeah.
And again, this, this is all assuming that you are going to have a lot of extra space if something happens, that if that is the case, I don't think it would be any different if you were just on Main Street.
So does this reflect the different, do we have a change in traffic pattern at that end of town with a different lane usage than when this study started? That is very recent, it's not 60 days old.
Main and Franklin.
Yeah, Main and Franklin is.
It's now got a dedicated turn lane.
Like a month ago.
Okay.
So I don't think that's reflected up there, any consideration of a North Main Street diet.
Well, again, you're not doing the diet or doing that analysis, so this is just all based upon if something does happen. And so this, just, those, these are the streets on the west side that could potentially include bicycle lanes. So then, moving to the south side, again, as you can see, there's actually, some, it's more opportunity, there's only a few locations where shared lane markings or the signs would be required in order to sort of create the connection, so people could actually be on a separate bike lane throughout, to get to most areas of the town within the southern portion. The exception is on West Street, as you can see, there's, there is a section where the road was just strange, so there would need to be some alternative there. And again, this reflects on Main Street, on South Main Street, if a lane diet occurs, there would be, be a resulting space to include bicycle lanes. And this is the list of those bicycle lanes. So transitioning to the pedestrian side, then. So again, as I mentioned, sort of prioritized access to the schools, the transit, the retail areas, as well as Walkers Brook Drive, really looking at the sidewalks, the conditions of those, the crosswalks, various ADA compliance elements, such as if there's a curb cut from a crosswalk, so that if you're on a wheelchair, you could actually get onto the sidewalk after crossing the street. So we did that, and then the other thing was looking at where there are gaps in the sidewalk, where you're missing sidewalks, and then just prioritizing a little bit where maybe investments in the future could be made for filling in those sidewalks. These photos just show some of those examples that we were speaking about. For example, top right shows that you have a crosswalk, but then, there's no curb cut, so you can't actually, if you were, were disabled, you might not be able to actually get onto it. There's numerous instances where there are crosswalks, but they're very difficult to see, so the guidance that we have in the policy shows some of, there are different types of crosswalks, and so, some styles are more highly visible, and so this is an example of where that might be more important. Looked at areas where the sidewalks are cracked, and so again, it's almost creating a punch list for the DPW and the town engineers as they move forward to make improvements. On the sidewalk cover side, I know it's a little blurry to see, what this essentially shows is three things. The sort of pink lines throughout are areas where there are no sidewalks, but there are sort of minor roads, they're called local roads as they're classified. The dark red ones are main roads, so Mastod classifies roads as arterials, collectors, et cetera, so that's those roads. And then, based upon sort of the input from the town, and et cetera, the yellow highlights are the several areas where we think that the town should prioritize putting sidewalks, and then those are around the other rotary, to think there are parts of the rotary on Bicycle Street that have a sidewalk, but some parts are missing, Pearl Street and Hawkins Street.
Go back to that for a minute. So, did you mention Pearl Street as well?
I did not mention Pearl Street.
I thought I misunderstood what you said, I'm sorry.
I, I think Pearl Street, it does not have sidewalks, but there's no right of way, so it was not really a high priority, because there's the lack of.
I mean, it's just, you know, it's very narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough enough to drive it, but nothing else into it.
There are parts of it, down by my way, with sidewalks, but it's not universal.
So here we just put, these are all in the report, but just some of the next steps is trying to sort of build a culture, or continuing to build a culture of incorporating bicycle facilities as a matter of routine, putting, prioritizing the sidewalks proactively, seeking out the additional funding sources, working with the adjacent communities, for example, in Wakefield, to think of our ways to connect to the, to the lake, working with the community partners, and then just continuing to do these initiatives that promote walking and bicycling. So with that, if there are any additional questions, Sarah or I can answer.
What, back up a slide, please. You know, again, my little trip to Somerville was instructive, I've never seen so many other alternative lanes. To what degree is there discretion, rather than making it routine as part of policy, that, Redding's a relatively old town, some of the streets don't really comply, not all of them necessarily straight, so there's some discretion, either more driven by pattern, driven by priorities? My reading of the smart streets seem to describe that you set up the policy, and then it's, it's executed, but there isn't, once the policy's in place, it's kind of on, on its own, if you will.
I'm not sure.
We'll be following.
The, the notes we got in preparation at this meeting describe some of the, for example, the next steps, incorporate bicycle facilities as a matter of routine. What may be appropriate in one street isn't appropriate in another, based on either this board or whoever's assessed with it. What I'm, would be really struggling with is if this became prioritize bicycle facilities everywhere that's possible. Well, everywhere it's possible may not be everywhere that it's necessary or desired. That's what I'm getting at, is to what degree can you apply?
I think the, the policy wasn't intentionally written in that, it's, you're going to look at it and actually think about it, thinking about it, but it doesn't mean you're going to put the bicycle facilities everywhere, or the pedestrian facilities everywhere.
And that's subject to the task force, the traffic post?
Depending, again, depending on sort of the type of project, so, by the routine types of projects, that yes, it's mainly their jurisdiction to think about this, which is what they already do. And the town engineer is, ultimately, he's the one that is responsible for paving the roads, and he's part of this task force.
So the PTTF, instead of doing South Main as a diet, might suggest we do a link to Summer, and then a link over to Woburn, back to Main? They, they have variability in what they can do.
Well, in that case, it's, I believe it would be the MPO or Mastod that would be doing the analysis to determine whether a lane diet is appropriate on Main Street, yeah, because it's Main Street.
But, but are we free to choose other?
Of course, yeah.
Alternatives to that, to achieve the same end?
These are sort of, again.
The bikers from A to B.
Some guidelines or things to consider, yes.
Okay, so these are mandates?
So is that the way you characterize this, Chris, is, as guidelines? I mean, because that, there's, when I look at this thing, and I've been to one of the, one of the meetings, and I, and I thought it was highly informative and productive, and then I've read this, and I kind of come away with two different messages.
Right.
Trying to clarify, in my mind, anyway, maybe it's just me that's, maybe I'm not that swift, and I can't figure it out. It strikes me that there's guidelines, and then, I read a little further, and it makes me feel like, if you adopt this, this is what you have to do.
It's intended to be guidelines, so that you're going to start, you're going to ensure that you think about it and consider it. It's not a requirement.
But you're not mandated.
So it's not going to hold up funding, if we decide that we don't want to do this aspect?
Funding, you do this. I, I get that. So if you're using somebody else's money, and they want you to do it a certain way, then, you know, you gotta, you have to deal with whoever's giving you the money, but.
This absolutely does not cede local control.
I guess that's the big, that's the real question.
That's the main thing, yeah.
Yeah, I'm where you were, Gene. I read, I saw both of those.
Yeah, I saw it both ways, and I, you know.
And I'm just fearful that kind of the road application of policy sometimes gets you into trouble.
Right.
So if we vote to adopt this, everything we see here is not cast in concrete.
I don't think it changes anything to P with lots of Ts and F's, but it does.
Something like that. You've got to come up with something.
I would like to add that the CPDC did review both the policy and the Bike and Ped Plan, and made recommendations that the board endorsed and adopted both. One comment, that one of the members of the CPDC did point out that this does give them even more, that much more teeth when it comes to subdivision rules and regulations. They, they're always, not always, but many times their approach by the developer to waiver on sidewalk installations, or roadway widths, or this and that, when sometimes they're felt, you know, put in an odd situation, whereas when they have another policy or another document to say, you know, this is how the town feels about these sort of facilities, we really want to make sure that they're included in our new developments, because if they're not, who's going to provide them later when the roadway is accepted by the town? So.
And we like optional teeth.
Yes, we do like optional teeth.
Speaking of optional teeth, is there a way, is there a way if, if the Complete Streets policy is accepted, is there a way within year one, or year two, or the initial period, the board could get a read on kind of the applicability of it, so you can get a sense of how the, the FFT is, is applying this?
Oh my God.
Simply because it's new, and its applicability may be of interest to the board, it would be to me, just to me.
Yeah, I, I don't see why not, if the board would like some sort of annual report on these actions or exemptions that were taken by the PTTF.
Not just annual, but when you're doing something that's compliant with the Complete Streets, you, just as an advisor, hey, this is an opportunity, it's compliant, this is what we're doing.
Or, or not.
Or not. Yeah. In that way, it's not on autopilot, you kind of, if we support it, we kind of get a read at the first couple of, of attempts to employ it, to make sure it kind of fits our view of it as well.
Yeah, and I think, I haven't been part of the PTTF as long as other folks, but it's my understanding from other staff, that they've already been doing a lot of these things the whole time, so.
We just don't do the last step, which you just suggested, which isn't that hard. Put it on paper.
Bob's just going to throw it in our report every day.
Yeah, well, no, I won't do that.
Okay, any other questions from the board, or from Chris and Sarah? All right, very good. Thank you very much, good time today.
Thanks, Chris.
We have two other motions here. Is, is the board comfortable with moving ahead to adopt these policies, or would you want to reason and take them up?
One's a policy, one's a plan, I guess.
Right.
I, I think, my impression is that, that the policy seems like I'm comfortable, you know, comfortable adopting. The, the, the plan, I haven't read all the way through, I have to admit, I know I've had it a couple of times, but it, I have not read through fully.
I saw.
And I, I know Mr. Halsey has looked at this quite a bit, and has been to meetings, so maybe he has a better recommendation on that. I will say that having, having worked with the CPDC extensively on other things, and seen them discuss this the first time around, if they, if they feel comfortable with it, I, I bet.
They voted to adopt it?
They did vote to adopt both, correct.
And they voted to recommend, and we do the same.
And they voted to.
Yeah, they, they voted that the board adopted thirties as roadway measures.
So, so, in my mind, I'm, I'd be pretty comfortable, but I haven't read it, so I don't have to, I haven't fully read it for.
So we can in good faith adopt this policy, and then dissent on the road diet if we so choose.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And you can do that shortly.
Or accept it, as we so choose.
So the, the road diet is part of the plan we were being at, is that, do I have that right? It's not?
No, okay.
That's just kind of.
It's one of many tools.
It's a standalone, you know.
Before you make a motion, if you want, Gene, if you want to come up and just give the update of the South Main Street diet, which is there is no real option, so, just so you have all the information before you proceed.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Diets, don't we all love to talk about diets?
That's your road diet.
So, the road diet is really something that is conceptual at this point. I think you know by now, when we do anything in planning, we have many, many, many meetings, witness from the zoning advisory committee having 40 public meetings related to the zoning dialogue changes that'll be proposed next fall. So I just want to preface by saying, it's not like we're a bunch of planners that are going to run out there and, and start changing around lanes without a lot of public dialogue, first and foremost. We haven't even gone there yet, but more importantly, this is really under the jurisdiction of Mastod at the state. And so, a meeting we had there several months back, we started talking about one issue that could really be a problem for this concept, which is the number of driveways that are throughout, particularly South Main Street, North Main Street as well. We need to understand that better with the help of Mastod and a couple of the engineering folks there, we're going to really take a critical eye at that, because if, if there's too many.
You'll have head-on collisions.
Yeah, this, this isn't going to work for me. So we're asking a lot of questions right up front, and, and really being clear that we want a lot of public dialogue, if we can overcome that first hurdle of the driveways, and I'm not sure we can. That being said, we have a unique, I guess I'll call it, an opportunity to see what it might be like to modify these lands when the water main project goes through. That'll be a real test during construction, of what it's like when you move lanes around.
Get to see what it feels like.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll give us a little peek.
So by embracing this policy and plan, we're really not embracing an endorsement of those changes.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, really important. I think it's important for the public to understand, that, you know, conceptually, in, in my mind, and I have looked at these a lot, both policy and the plan, conceptually make so much sense. I mean, it, it starts to service, you know, a huge cross-section of our citizens, not It's not just the drivers, or just the bikers, or just the walkers. It's kind of, you know, a co-existent kind of thing. And so philosophically, I'm, I'm there, as long as it's not locking us down to anything that, you know, we later discover regret, too many pitfalls for us to embrace.
The devil is in the details.
Or it comes back while you authorize it.
I don't want to pass it without reading it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Kind of a legislatory.
He's a new politician.
What a concept.
That's kind of the genesis of getting a brief, whenever these, whenever something that's appropriately part of the complete streets is brought to the fore, I'd be curious, maybe other members of the board, it could be two-minute discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, it sounds like the sense of the board is ready to move forward.
Moving the board of selectmen to adopt the town of Reading Complete Streets policy as amended.
Okay, Marcy seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, five zero?
Moving the board of selectmen to adopt the town of Reading Bike and Pedestrian Plan as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marcy seconds, discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor, five zero? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A late evening.
Not too bad.
Actually, we're right on time.
Not too good.
Caught up.
How'd we do it?
I don't know, do we?
We...
No idea.
Let me check my phone. My phone's going wrong, Ray. That's correct. Four minutes faster than my phone.
Good night.
The sunny side period didn't take half an hour.
That's true, yeah.
Took all four minutes, that's nice.
Okay, the other, the other discussion in here tonight is regards the 2020, Reading 2020 discussion. You guys will remember that we met on that Saturday morning at Jordan's, along with some of the town heads, and talked about our focus areas of interest, and we divvied ourselves up into four groups, I should say. Bob and Gene managed to facilitate the meeting and much of the discussion. Discussion now, so what, how do we put that to work? What are folks' thoughts at the end of, of that round of planning in terms of proceeding?
I have some initial thoughts, but I think one, two, and three are quite different from four, and just so everyone knows. One is community partners, Kevin, Dan, and myself, and that's to get out and compile the list of all the organizations in town. And there's many different ways we're already starting to do that. I'll tell you, I was at a meeting, I think it was last week, on the cultural grant, and they are compiling exhaustive lists of anything that sounds like cultural. It's unbelievable how many organizations there are in town. So between that, the Chamber of Commerce, and other groups, we have a really large list. And then the second part of that is, all right, what do they do, and what overlaps? And that'll take some, some work, and take some thinking. As Gene says, we've been on a rubber chicken circuit. There's actually a fair amount of interest in the business community to engage with town government in a forward-looking way. But not to just have endless discussions on policy, to do something.
Right.
And I think they understand that that's kind of where our heads are at, too. The next group is services and performance measurement. You're going to hear a little bit more about this as a topic tomorrow night at the financial forum broadly. Marcy and Gene, we're going to look at this, and this is, if you will, a list of services that just town government provides. So we've got the community on the end and all the groups, and then the second part, if you will, is town government. What are the things we do? And given that we do them, can they all be measured? And some of them will be difficult to measure. Some of them are easy to measure. How many building permits did you issue? Good of a job, did you do issuing a permit? That's a little more subjective. It kind of gets into customer service. And then communication is, okay, you've, you've identified all these different resources, who does what, who overlaps? How do we communicate to the public? And you're going to also hear FinCom talk a lot about that tomorrow night, and get some feedback from whoever comes on, what are better ways to communicate? Is this such a thing? I don't think there's any one way that's going to solve any of our problems. I think you're going to find the answer is do as many different things as you can. I sent one of my colleagues a, what I thought was a very humorous conference call, invitation today, and it's how to teach governments how to disengage from using Facebook, because it's already proved to be a bad idea in the public sector. This other social media, you should be using. So Pete, if you're watching, I told you. The point, the point of communication is, whatever we decide today is going to be different in about three months. You have to decide to be very flexible and very adaptable, and listen to teenagers, because they don't want to come and tell us all the different ways to communicate.
When they're away from their smartphones.
Which would be, don't leave a voicemail.
You know, there are some businesses now that have banned emails, in certain, at least in certain ways, within the organization. You just can't use them. They're not there yet. And I, and I think these three things somewhat stand on their own, and they may overlap, but I think the fourth one is, is different. And it's, it's called strategic planning. John Arena, John Halsey, Jimmy, Greg, and Ruth. And that's where I had asked for your help late last week of identifying, and we don't have to solve this tonight, what are the key areas, strategic planning-wise, that we want to address? And I'll preface those remarks with, some of them, we've already had executive sessions on, and they're not really appropriate to discuss in public fully. So we may have to just give it a broad name, but we'll all understand what that means. Many of the strategic planning things are quite public right now, and just for anyone that's listening, if it's not public now, it will be soon. So at some point in the future, if we're looking for any action, it's not like we're going to do anything in secret. We'll go to a town meeting, we'll ask for whatever it is we think we want, with good reason, and at that point, it'll be defended. But there are certain things that are subject to executive session strategically, that we're just not able to disclose at this point in time. So it's really up to the board ultimately, with as much help as you can get from staff as to, I don't know if you want to list all the strategic planning things and then prioritize them, or just do them off the top of your head and say what's important. I started to write down something to share with you tonight, and there's just so many things.
It's overwhelming.
It just is. You know, and then I, I think this one's really important, let me write it down. And then I come back in a day and go, well, that's not as nearly as important as this one here. So, you know, every day is different, and depending on what you're dealing with, that seems more important. We're going to have to find some way, as a group, to prioritize, because all of it is just not possible. Maybe some of it feeds on itself, maybe we can get help from the community, the business community, the cultural community, that's, that's our objective. But that's kind of the fourth part of this piece, is what are the actual action items we'd like to take? Because that's what everyone wants, and I certainly want, and I know you want. So what do we want on account of? So I'd almost say the way to approach this is really look ahead, and what do you want the outcome to be of something, whatever? All-day kindergarten should be a town hall, whatever it is. Whatever it is you want, let's then figure out what are the paths to get there.
I think it should be the town forest.
It should play up high.
Second story, second story of Burbank, yeah.
Outward bound.
And then another set of things might be, you don't really know the outcome, but you know a process you want to engage in, that you want to explore something. You know, if there's a certain real estate idea, it's worth exploring. We don't know exactly where we'll end up with it, where all-day kindergarten will go, but we know it's an idea we need to explore, so. You know, I just opened the floor, there's a couple department heads here, what do you think the important strategic planning items are? And I will tell you tomorrow night, what you're going to hear from the finance committee is a discussion, I know you saw the agenda of the importance of understanding, we have very limited resources, we can't do everything for everyone. So as a town, we have to come together and, and understand, you know, I was really surprised at Mark's fourth one, but it was, one of the things is everyone willing to stand up and tell, tell us what item gets too much fun. It's like, I can't wait to see the...
Yeah.
Aside from the town manager. It'll be interesting. And it will be interesting, because when we asked that question in 2010, what services are offered by the town that you use, you could do without, the answer is this.
So that's the thing, people will get up and say that if they have school-aged children, you can cut the elder services. If they're aged out of needing the schools, you can cut the schools. That's unfortunately the way that it works.
I also think the question is really hard to answer, in that people don't necessarily correlate level of service with spending, at least not at the first meeting, right? What is a dollar worth? What is $10,000 worth?
And that's where, you know, the selectmen especially are, you're the gatekeeper near the end, just before FinCom and town meeting and me. You have a sense of the whole picture. Very few folks do. They have a sense of their urgent priority of what they want and what they see, and they just don't understand necessarily all the rest. And that's why, as I tried to sit down and evaluate strategic plans, my head was just starting to explode, it was just too many things. You know, and that's not a bad problem to have, it's a lot better than being myopic and saying, no, it's nothing at all, there's only two things. But we have to be able to share that multitude with everyone in some way, so that they understand. It's not that yours isn't important, it just tucks in here at number eighty-nine, you know, between other, behind double things.
The other thought is, I think you've got a, the action to accomplish a goal, if your action isn't the one that gets picked, you should still have some affinity to the goal, whether it's, let's say it's growing the business community. You may have an idea, your idea's eighty-nine. If your goal is achieved in alternative ways, we're all part of the benefit, part that benefits that. I get the point that you're eighty-nine, number eighty-nine, you can get delivered, but that's an action that delivers some of the same benefits. Affinitizing these up into mission, what's the mission of this, or what's the end goal? I guess you also would point that the path you get there is another way to look at it. It's more critical to me than, what are the individual steps that you do in spending or actions? It's what's the end goal? You know, begin with the end to nine, kind of thing.
I'll tell you, one of the things that Gene and I especially have talked about is, there's a, there's a real deep need in this community to have a multi-board summit, because lots of boards understand their mission, and they really don't know how it fits in, and they may not care.
Right.
And they don't have to care, but they should understand. They should understand, you know, you're this piece of the pie, these other folks are the other pieces of the pie. You know, and the selectmen see the whole thing. So when you're coming to them, understand that you're just a part of what they're seeing.
Give a thought how you do that.
Well, just have, invite mul, many boards together, whether, we were debating whether do chairs and vice chairs only for size, but it really, you really almost have to sit down and decide all boards or certain boards, and that's a tough one.
John?
Well, from a strategic planning standpoint, the thing that we have to be very careful of is that if it gets too, if too many things are thought to be strategic, then suddenly what you have is a binder that two people have to lift, and you put it on the shelf, and nobody can ever take it down and work on it, because it's just so...
Too big.
So onerous that you just can't go there. And then you end up with nothing at the end, except an old strategic plan that nobody ever looked at, and now you determine you have to have a new strategic plan. I mean, I, I say this from sad experience. So, you know, so strategically, I mean, if you pick four or five pillars to build around that can be in a constant state of reexamination, then, you know, then the plan can take, take life, and it actually can start moving down the road. And so I think we've got to be very careful that we don't get paralyzed by inaction, saying, the thing is so big, oh my God, we've got to keep thinking till we get everything that's correct on the list, and then, and, and you know, what will happen is, I'm already old, so, I mean, you know, I could be dead by the time we get to the end of that, that, you know, adventure. So I think, I think what we need to do is, I mean, we've got a, so for, in strategic planning, for example, we've got a small subgroup, and maybe what that subgroup does is it gets together, you know, once every two weeks for, you know, a month or two, and comes, comes back with, here's what we think, you know, here's kind of the pillars of where we go. Once those are agreed on, you can take all, that huge list and compartmentalize it, you know, I mean, in other words, and I actually believe that there's probably only four or five major things, and everything else will fit up a subgroup, and then to your point, everybody feels enfranchised, that they're, you know, that they're being addressed.
It's top-down, I thought, a lot.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, if we get, if we try to start too wide, we'll just, we'll never get down the road.
You're going to have too many numbers.
So it, it can become very wide and very inclusive as the plan starts to unfold. I mean, it's, it's kind of a, it's a tactical approach to, and there are many tactical approaches to creating a strategic plan, but, you know, I think we just got to get going.
Well, I've seen facilitators use the old sticky approach, where you, you put down your piece of the puzzle on a sticky, it goes up on a board, and then someone comes in and starts grouping things.
It's a KJX.
Precisely, and that is, I think that's the, I think that's the way to do it, and I think we can start at the subcommittee level and then report. And then I think what we're going to find is that these other three, these other three things are big, and they all have a, there's a functional connection to the strategic plan.
Strategic plan, they fit underneath the strategic plan.
They do. So, so, you know, my suggestion is, it's a long journey, let's take the first step. Let's just get cooking, you know?
Another thing you're going to hear tomorrow night from the finance committee is a very strong interest in doing multi-year budgeting, not just one year, let's come back in here. One year, let's come back in here. They want to take a crack at doing a two-year budget.
What are the advantages to it?
There'll be less time wasted in the second year, if everyone climbs on board of the concept. And again, the backdrop of all this is the presumption that there is no override next April, but let's put something together for two years with the idea that if the town wants more or better, it's going to have to pony up for it. Again, you're going to hear a lot of this tomorrow, and, no, I've thought about it. There's no harm in doing it, I will say that, that doesn't mean you don't do it the second year, because you still have to reexamine all your assumptions and your priorities, because things change, you have to be flexible, and, you know, what the chief might have wanted two years ago for a second year, he might not want, you know, a year later, and that's fine. But at least if there's some planning, stronger planning elements brought in financially, everyone will understand, look, we're going to use a million and a half of free cash in the first year, and a million and a half in the second year, and that's it. There's some wild cards out there, we don't know what state aid is. We're going through an RFP process for health insurance, where we will be in the fall. There's a possibility we'll get a two-year quote, which would be really helpful for this exercise. There's only one vendor that can do that, so if they're successful, that would be a helpful thing. But the finance committee would like to take a shot at a two-year budget, not purely voted, just vote the first year, have already done a lot of work on the second year.
But, you know, the two-year budget is done every year. I mean, that's kind of the nature of the way...
That's something I'm struggling with, you have to do it every year.
Well, that's what I do, but I'm not sure a lot of other people do it.
Thinking of it the same way.
I do two or three years at a time.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, you know, as I get closer and closer to retirement, that's what I was doing all the time, just personally, is, you know, you, I mean, you look at, you look at three years, but you got to do it every year, you know, otherwise, you know, because, because there's a dynamic to it. So, you know, I actually think it's a really healthy thing to do a two-year budget, as long as you do it every year.
Well, your, your years are plus or minus 10%. Your near-term is plus or minus two or three, you know?
Yeah.
Accurate.
Right. And it's a different thing for me to do it, as opposed to it to be a public discussion. I can do it, no one has to care. But if the school committee and the board of selectmen is engaged in thinking about two years at a time and discussing in public, it changes the dynamic a bit. Because it also allows you to say, we need these six things. Do two, and then we can do two, and two don't get done at all.
But don't you think, Bob, that that is going to be very eye-opening to our citizens? Because in the very short time that I've been a selectman, I have come to a conclusion that there has not been enough money printed in the history of man to do what everybody wants to do.
Yeah.
And I think that they don't, they don't mean it, you know, in a, in a, in a greedy way, they just kind of, you know, sometimes don't grasp the whole picture, and I think the idea of doing this in public helps people understand that.
It's because individually, what any one person or group wants is not that large. It's the collection of all 25,000 sitting in the same place, and all want something that gets large.
I don't mean to steal tomorrow night's thunder, but what other expense side or items would you need to kind of know on a two-year basis, besides health insurance?
We have all our labor contracts, or most of them, negotiated, which is really helpful. So we will know those two years, again.
For the schools?
In cases, yes.
Those things are only going to help you the first year, and next year, when you go to do your two-year plan, or do your one-year, you know, the next year you don't know, so...
Well, it's really a one-year plan and a one-year lookout. It's not really...
Right, it's a, right, it's a one-year plan and a one-year lookout.
But it helps you forecast going into those negotiations, because you kind of know where, you kind of can know your own bounds.
If it's said that way, I think you get it. If you say the two-year, if you first said it like saying, you're on autopilot, year one for year two, can't be that.
Well, I think it could be eye-opening to see what has changed dramatically in a Well, I, I think it could be eye-opening to see what has changed dramatically in a year, in terms of where now you're suddenly asking for money, whereas you were last time.
I think that would be very interesting.
And things do change. Absolutely, things do change. I know from the years on FinCom that what you think you're going to need, or where you think you're going to need to spend, could change a lot in a year. But it gives you that additional way to look at things.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you from my former position, sometimes I was quite surprised to hear of something that was suddenly very urgent in what would be the second year, that wasn't even brought up the first year. And many times there was a reason for it, sometimes there was poor planning. So I can tell you last year, because I knew you were in a bad mood, now I really need it, or else.
I decided to wait until it had to be done.
So, and Mark, the doctor, also wants to, possibly even early, identify some, what we've traditionally called community priorities. So for instance, we did substance abuse jointly with the schools, we laid out a plan, involved hiring in the police department and hiring the school department. I think we spent five hundred odd thousands split in some way between us over a year. And actually, in that case, we had a two-year plan, the schools never fully followed through, and they changed their priorities, which is fine. But he wants to get out the notion of, you know, is there a priority that's different than the usual budget process that any of you have? And get that question answered. I will tell you, and I won't speak for FinCom, but it left a bad taste in my mouth, the way the budget process worked at the end of last year. Where those that asked the loudest were funded.
Yeah, I, that's.
That was a very poor process.
That happened much earlier.
Very poor.
And, you know, finance committee may or may not be a policy body, and that may have not been a policy statement, but the point was, it shouldn't have been decided at the last minute with limited audience participation, in my opinion. And they don't agree with that, which is their right. But I think if we take this approach, we'll get a lot of this discussion up front, so that, that'll at least give FinCom the ammunition of saying at the last minute, why didn't you tell us that? We've been asking for it for months.
Right.
Don't come to me at the last minute and say this. Whether they choose to use it that way or not is their choice. So I don't know, you know, if five of you want to get together, I'll probably join you, or we can break into smaller groups for that strategic planning.
Having everyone on deck would be useful, maybe having some of the department heads kind of do some group think.
Well, don't you think in the strategic planning area, if the subcommittee meets first, and I, and I do think you should add yourself to that, Bob, I can't imagine you not being part of that, but, you know, the chief and John, you and I, I, I think if we take a, take a shot at this in a, in a group that's really manageable, we're not going to get everything, but we're going to get, you know, a foundation together.
Give it two or three sessions, maybe two or three weekends.
And then like bring it back and, you know, and, you know, have a completely open dialogue with everybody about, what did we, what did we miss? You know, what did we, you know, did we look at something way too hard, and, you know, get some other input?
But another important part of this, which I think the town has not done so well in the past, which EdSat can help us learn, is just because you do a good job of something doesn't mean it matters.
Right.
We need to identify upfront, does it matter? Instead of just saying, this would be something we could do and accomplish actually in the next year and check it off. Okay, but does it matter?
Does it matter?
I thought that was a really telling approach.
Is it relevant?
I thought, I thought the EdSat presentation was just so eye-opening, just, in fact, that's part of the strategic plan, has to be advertising our strengths and getting credit for it in public domain.
Absolutely.
That was, that was a really productive and informative session, I, I thought. I wish we would add more people at it, and, and more directly connect to people at it as well.
And part of strategic planning can't but help involve the schools. So some, some portion of this is going to overlap, and you're going to have to involve the schools and the school committee, and I assume they'll be fine with it. You know, John and I have started talking about sharing certain positions. He needs something, we need something, it's pretty comparable, why don't we do half and half? I don't know if that'll go anywhere, as practical matter, but it's nice to have that dialogue.
It is the way, I mean, it's kind of the way of work. I mean, it's kind of, everything is marching in that direction, from nonprofits to corporations to municipalities. So we might as well do it inside of our own.
Might as well use our own shared services.
Right.
You know, and another resource we all have, is we have a lot of volunteer hours. How can these boards help in this? And I've thought about it, but I haven't solved it by any means. But Jean and I did have a discussion, and John, you were at one of the board health meetings where we effectively gave them a task.
Right.
Said, here, you guys got to figure this out. We can't figure it out.
And they seem very energized by that, actually. I mean, I think, I suspect most of the committees might have a similar.
Yeah, I wondered.
A similar reaction.
Yeah, we have a lot of resource there. You know, we're saying we don't have the resources to do a lot of things, well, we've got more resources than we think. So, do you guys have anything to throw in? You're not that busy, right?
No, okay. I just wanted to add one thing, which is, as part of the work we're going to be doing in developing an economic development plan, we're going to be, we've got some grant money to do this plan, and we're going to be doing a visioning session, a couple of visioning sessions, but visioning is part of the plan. And it's an interesting exercise to do some visioning, because in economic development, what it means for Reading could be very different than what it means for other communities like Upper Arlington, or, or even, you know, even Wakefield. And, and try and, you know, I'm a big proponent of sort of knowing, knowing your audience and understanding what the community goals are. Because, you know, I could come up with an economic development plan that looks like Davis Square in Summer Road, and people would say, that's not Reading, you know, that's Davis Square. So I think that's, that's been, as we've seen, I, I believe, in the zoning work that we've done, having those public forums and being able to get public input as we try and craft new language has been really helpful, and has been part of the redraft, including that public input. Not just having a public meeting and, you know, putting up PowerPoint, saying, all right, everybody, that's what we're going to do, see you later, you know, actually getting the input, and then using it somehow in the, the new vision and the new planning process. So, it, it's tricky to, to figure out how to get public input. You have a meeting, and you think people are going to come, and, you know, it's always a little disappointing that you don't get more people to show up.
So Jean, do you think that if we, if we, as a first approach, went to the committees?
Yeah.
Because, see, they, they've got a little bit more of a vested interest, they've stepped up already, they've said, you know, I'm willing to serve, and maybe that's the place you start this kind of storyboard visioning, and you kind of have an instant audience, you know, kind of to your point. I mean, and, and maybe you start, you know, with the chair and the vice chair, but then it can expand, and from there, it can grow some public legs and get, and get more people involved in the vision. That's the way a strategic plan gets executed, when it has buy-in from, you know, the exact opposite, it's bottom-up buy-in, you know, instead of the top-down, you know, this is what we're doing. Because then if you haven't been part of the process, the kind of that storyboard visioning process, you don't care if you haven't been part of it.
I think there's two parts to that, too. I mean, the first part, I definitely agree with, you know, to get that vision, go out there and say, this is what we're really interested in doing. And, and talk to the, the boards, whether, whether it's just the chair, vice chair, or the entire board, and say, you know, this is something of interest to us, this is something that's, that's, you think is going to have some value to you. And then almost do the same thing that they did with the EdSat. Then take that information, go out to the public, say, this is what we're thinking about doing. Do you have any value in that? Well, you could do that, but that's not going to help. You know, you'll probably get a lot of answers like that. So it would be good to kind of start out that way. But I think that ultimately, you do have to go out there and say, does it matter?
Yeah.
You know, take that information that you've gathered now, and go out and say, hey, does this matter to you? Does this, does this, does this not? And, and see what kind of information you get. I think ultimately, if you're not going out there with that same mentality at the end, you know, you're probably just going to end up spinning your wheels to a degree with a strategic plan.
I think you need to, to actually find out, like, how much does this matter to you? Because given, given no price tags on it, everything, everything is important. So, and you have to have some way of gathering, how important is this to you, not just, is it important? And then everybody else say, oh yeah, I want it all.
Right, well, that's true.
And by the way, could you lower my taxes?
Yeah, no, you have to rank them, yeah.
It'd be, so wouldn't it be interesting to be able to take a dollar of your real estate taxes and actually pie chart that thing?
Well, we have that.
It's not that interesting.
Well, I think, I think if you drill it down deep enough, it might be, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, would you trade off this in favor of not having an increase of another dollar?
You know, for, for better or worse, at least historically, the budget doesn't change much every year, that pie looks about the same. Ten years ago, did it look different? Yeah, health insurance is probably a smaller slice. But other things, go back thirty years, yeah, we had three times bigger DPW and a smaller school department. But year to year, you're talking about an inch here and there. Is that right or wrong? I think it would be turmoil to make massive changes every year.
Wouldn't it be interesting to be able to forecast into that, though, Bob?
Right.
The strategic plan. So the plan, if the visioning process drove a certain kind of plan, and then you could forecast the look of that pie chart out five years or ten years, that could be very telling in what you really want on that list. I mean, you know, maybe that fifth thing, not that important when you look at it.
That helped you to decide, where are we shaving, where are we growing, to get to where we want to be.
And our opportunities to do anything meaningful are so limited because we're landlocked.
Right.
You know, if we had big choices to be made with big parcels of land, this would be a really interesting exercise, but, you know, and that, again, that kind of attacks the revenue side a little more than the expense side, but it also may determine, we're going to attract a lot of school kids in by having a lot of housing, that's important, and oh, are we going to just go for, you know, commercial? And we wouldn't do that. So we're not going to change the demographics of the community all that much, or the composition of the community, or the demographics. You know, Reading kind of is what it is, and to change it, it would be hard to imagine. You're ninety, ten, you can't get eighty, twenty, even if you want to.
But you'd be very hard pressed to be able to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to have a major change in the way that the town is laid out.
We can take every ninth house by eminent domain.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, too, about the Community Preservation Act. And based on the conversation that we had at the start of the meeting about how concerned people were about losing historic structures and the fabric of neighborhoods, I worked a lot with it in my previous job in the city of Peavody. And for a city to have the Community Preservation Act, it's pretty rare, especially a, kind of a blue-collar city like Peavody was. But they collected one percent under that tax, and we, we did a lot of open space preservation, community preserve, historic preservation, and recreation facilities and open space, too. So, and housing, affordable housing as well. And I'm not advocating for more taxes, but as we have the dialogue about how can we, you know, what are our priorities as a community, that's a potential resource. And I'm not saying that could solve the problem for twenty-six summer out, but it is something to think about. And I know, I think it passed, it missed by just a few votes.
Yeah, I was always surprised, it was brought once, and it narrowly missed, and then it just never came back. It missed by within a few percent, that balance box. You know, and I don't know if it's a better bad thing, but I was just surprised that, okay, just get it.
I think the sense of the board, if I'm hearing correctly, is that we would try to get this board together with you, Bob, and maybe some department heads, over two or three, couple-hour sessions, and start to use yellow stickies, white mark, white board markers, and start to look at, what are the four or five pillars? And where do some of these other aspects plug in?
And I think you'll start to see a flavor of that tomorrow night, because it's, you know, again, FinCom's going to ask questions and just get a lot of ideas thrown up on a whiteboard. And then later, going to say, all right, what's important, go throw a yellow dot next to it.
I suspect it'd be similar to, you know, the brainstorming sessions we had, since Mark was the one that facilitated those sessions.
I'm sure billboards will come up and be very.
I think those are dead. I think those are completely dead.
Well, the things they're trying to do, the community partners, is see what can possibly be outsourced meaningfully.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're looking for that kind of a flavor on, you know, if there's services the town can't provide that you want, what are the alternatives other than paying more taxes? Can we possibly ship these over?
Well, can you private?
Yeah. Do they want to hear any of that tomorrow, or is it pretty sure?
It's probably a little early for that, but.
You know, it might not be bad. That actually was the only thing that people did vote for, was prioritizing trash pickup. Despite the fact that the, that the contract that we've gotten was tremendously advantageous to us.
It's a really good contract.
That was the one thing that people voted for when they had to vote for something that they already had.
They weren't beginning the deduction on the taxes.
Right.
As opposed to an override for the trash.
I think there's a lot of services the town offers that residents are indifferent as to who offers them, that way. And we have to think, as a business, even though we're not, do we have a competitive advantage? Are we offering this because we're better at it? Or not? And sometimes the answer is yes. I'd be hard pressed to know how any private organization could do recreation better. I just don't know how. They might do as well on a really good day, but there's other things, too. When you're doing one thing with one person, whatever it is, how good can you really be? You have to have a really exceptional person, and is that a good business model? As opposed to recreation is so dear to the whole community. John Feuther's not allowed to leave, but if he did, the community would still be interested in recreation.
It should always be an interchangeable, that should not be tied to one person. Although when you have one person that's very good, you'd like to hang on to them, but that's got to be, there's got to be an interchangeable part to that.
Well, that's been your mantra, I think, all along.
Well, and that's why you have to engage the boards, because in some cases, the boards are involved in that field, whatever it is, rec committee, whatever, board of health, you know, and make sure they understand.
That's why I think the visioning, perking up through the committees first is actually not a bad idea. It kind of accomplishes the thing you're talking about, that both of you are talking about, kind of coming at it from different directions, so.
Well, there are some, for sure, that would have strong opinions.
Think?
Oh, yeah. And others, I don't know. So, okay, well, we'll see how tomorrow goes. I'll, I'll put a lot on paper for the August meeting, because we need to start figuring out goals. You know, and even if it's only ten or twenty of them, instead of fifty.
Well, can we begin engaging the subcommittee?
Absolutely.
From the standpoint of, you know, just saying, okay, we're going to pick a date, you know, in mid or late August, and, and, you know, spend a couple of hours together and get it.
Yeah, I, I wanted to have a discussion with some of the department heads, I don't think we have, the fact that one person volunteered for everything is fine, we don't have enough people in some of them. So as an example, Sharon is on communication. Sharon will be incommunicado for the next six to eight weeks, because it's the end of the fiscal year. So she's not going to be of any help, and she'd be the first to tell you that.
Right.
So you don't want it not to happen. So we'll just kind of double up in some cases on some of these things. Okay.
All right. Next topic for discussion on our agenda tonight is town manager evaluation process. Bob celebrated his one-year anniversary in June.
What was the date? I, I passed it June first, I didn't celebrate again.
And in your packet tonight are evaluation formats used for the prior town manager and a prior board, I would add. The discussion before us is the mechanism to go through and evaluate the current town manager. Are you going to project that on the screen?
No, I'm not going to. I think we just have a chat. And I included a couple of examples from other towns, pretty much randomly. I, I looked at a dozen or so and tried to pick kind of two different types. I have to be honest, that most of the evaluations online of town managers look the same, one community to the next. It's usually a scale of one to five. You very rarely see anything below a three, and a three is bad.
I've always had a problem with that scale. Most of the places I've worked with have had a problem with that.
Okay.
You know, three, three is what.
Three is average.
Three is average, and it's not a bad grade. And fours and fives are truly exceptional stuff. So a three-oh wasn't very adequate review, but it gets inflated.
The more grain you'll already put there, the more difficult it becomes. I'd be happy with frankly, a three level that describes it as meets expectations, exceeds, or, you know.
That's what we have internally. We have three columns. The left-hand column, which is you didn't do a very good job, is a horrible thing for anyone to have to deal with. There's economic implications usually. And then it's just a question of, are you an average worker or a really good worker in lots of form? I can actually show you the evaluation, maybe it'd be helpful.
Like?
There's twelve things that everyone's evaluated on, and then another four optional, depending on your job. If you're a supervisor, this is four. But maybe that list would be helpful, you'd say, because that's how everyone else is evaluated here. I think tonight, though, you should try to identify some sort of a timeline. I don't know if there's a really ideal time to do it, other than it makes logical sense that if we finished the fiscal year and sometime in July, or hopefully July, we get a report of all the goals that were accomplished or not, then you're in a position to go to the next step. Say, okay, let's take a look back before we stream ahead and just give some kind of feedback. So probably August generally is a good time. May not work this year, no big deal. But it is something you probably want to do annually, I would say. I am interested, just speaking for myself, in specific, detailed honesty, as opposed to generic stuff that, so who cares? You know, I'm particularly interested in your feedback on what we didn't do well, what you were disappointed with. It doesn't matter why, just what didn't get done, or didn't like the way it was done. And I don't mind that in public. You know, don't feel like you're being critical and feel bad about it. It's important for me to know that, and for you to be very honest. And then it's important for the rest of the organization to understand what you've said, so that they can hear the same message. So when I'm telling them, look, this is important, see, I told you. You know, they'll get that. So for instance, if our customer service surveys were showing fifty-fifty scores instead of the good scores, you should tell me that's unacceptable. And I could say to everyone else, see, I told you it was unacceptable. So whatever it is, you know, you collectively believe in, I think is helpful. And again, when you think of the evaluation process, again, the ones I looked at, it's always one year. It really shouldn't be just one year. Because so what that you did something that's measurable in a year? It's what's the big picture here?
It's the goal, not the activity.
Yeah, it's not that you accomplished this task, it's that you took such a good bite out of it that you really set us up for the future. And that'll be your challenge to figure out how to do that.
So is there a set of goals, Bob, that, so...
Well, we don't have goals for next year, but you've got the ones from last year for what that was worth. There were thirty-some odd. I didn't do any kind of numerical scoring I could have. I don't know, three-quarters of them got done, something like that. And then there's lots of things not on the list. I didn't bother listening to it for you. But if that's the kind of thing you would find helpful, you know, we could do that. Again, back to the marketing theme, we don't spend any time on marketing. This stuff we're talking about tonight is marketing. It's me marketing to you, and the whole organization marketing to me to you. We don't spend a lot of time doing that, maybe we should.
Now, do you review staff on a fiscal year basis?
Correct.
Is it a disconnect to have you evaluate on a calendar year?
Well, I'm now evaluated on a fiscal year basis, which is why you should look through June thirtieth, and then as soon as practical.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So have you just finished that process?
Yeah, I can't, we normally do it in May, finish it in June. And it's a little awkward because the fiscal year's not done. But, you know, everybody has a pretty good sense.
You're on a good trajectory.
Because they need to have that information, whether they get a step on June thirtieth or not.
Right.
So it makes logical sense. We can do it in July or August and do it in retro, but it's just tradition that we do it this way. And many unions are the same. And you could do me in May or June the same way, but I couldn't give you a final report on goals. Employees can't either, but I don't mind that. I understand, you know, how much progress have you made? I'm not interested in, is it a hundred or not? I'm interested in is where is it? You know, and if it's not completed, why not?
I think it's more valuable doing yours on a postmortem basis rather than, you know, in a forecasted basis. I just, because it gives you the opportunity to finish up what you're doing with them. And then, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have the criteria in our hands to be working on it so that, you know, in a timely way, and, you know, you know, not, whatever today is, the twenty-ninth of July. I think it's... We should be done with that by now and be able to have this discussion.
Well, you're still in a reasonable timeframe, I think. Because you would have only heard information in July from me. You may have already been at the goal line and just waited for that as a formality. But to be fair, you didn't see it, you can't. And then the schools have a process where, I'm not super familiar with it, but the superintendent sits down with each member individually and discusses their evaluation. So they do individual evaluations. And, you know, in some instances...
Each school committee member?
Each school committee member does a separate evaluation that then becomes public. And then there's a collective score. So I was a little surprised at that, because the other communities I looked at, the town side, it's just a collective score that gets released. So I'm open to whichever way you want to do it. You lose your anonymity, you know, if that matters.
That could be wrong. I mean, just philosophically speaking, I'm not talking personally speaking. The process could be...
With the right people, with an appropriate view and a balanced view and fact-based assessment, it's fine.
And in the past, it was fairly well-understood or known what individuals selectmen thought about Peter on different topics. Whether or not full independent evaluations were dispersed or not, I don't even know. Do you remember? I think it was, at least in the last few years it was, so... The point is, I really don't want this board to waste a lot of time trying to come up with nice things to say or how to say them. That doesn't help any of us. You know, if you like something, just say you like it. Don't waste a lot of adjectives. Get on to the next thing, which didn't work so well. There's always those. Because that's what everyone else needs to know. And the other thing to think about is, how does that feedback fit into the next goal-setting process? Because we really should be setting goals, I would say, by the end of August generally. Because that only gives people from August to May to accomplish them, which is fine in most cases. But it probably makes more sense for that feedback to happen before you finalize goals, because some of the goals are going to have to react to what was set. And historically, some number of you, probably two, ought to sit together and come up with some kind of a form. And I can help you or not, as you choose. And, you know, we can use the old one, we can come up with a new one. And then one or two members kind of shepherd the process in terms of, because I can't do that. You've got to say, look, Dan, do you have that filled out yet? And then that person gathers it, because you need to keep that to yourself.
Do you believe in self-reviews too?
I'm happy to do one.
I find it illuminating.
I find them sometimes pretty interesting, yeah. Generally, people are a little harder on themselves, not always. I would think my insight would be helpful to you.
Well, the divergence factor is always interesting too.
That's certainly very interesting.
Were we all copacetic? Yeah, you know you sucked, and you know you did well, but, oh, we thought you did well, and you didn't think you did well. That's interesting.
Would it be helpful to do something, or even possible, like a two-year goal set? I'm talking about a loss of time. So if we're getting this, you know, goal set in September, like you said, giving people till May, it's a short time period. But if they knew that they could start working in July and August, for example, on that second year, because they already had it. So I don't know if it's possible to really come up with something like that, but it seems like it may be helpful.
One of the tricky parts is, you know, we evaluate most people in May, let's say. I and any other supervisor has already handed out goals for next year in May. Nothing to do with anything you may want or not want. That doesn't seem perfect to me, but generally, again, when you sit down and put your heads together and come up with strategic items, we all kind of know what they are. So I would venture to say, most of the goals handed out may not show up on your list, but they're important to do. And just because they're not in your list, may never rise to your level. You may never know about it. You know, we need a new phone system, well, you know about that. There's other things that would be very invisible to you, and why shouldn't they be? There's nothing wrong with that. But at department head level, that's where it's a little more tied into what goes on here. And to the extent some of them need to push that down, they do, some of them don't, and they won't. But the timing of this will never be perfect.
It's not a pipe dream to think that all this stuff can eventually tie up to the strategic plan, is it? Or is it?
We're too understaffed. I don't know. I mean, ideally, it should.
Yeah, I mean, it should.
Ideally, it has to.
How does your performance affect the accomplishment of this overarching? Down to the lowest gun in the chain.
If for some reason we don't communicate well, and I say, look, you just don't understand that ninety percent of my jobs are already spoken for. You're only talking about ten. You know, if there's an issue there with communication, you know, that's our fault. But you don't want to make a big deal of the fact that, you know, fifty-three people called me about summer out in the last four days. That's a certain amount of time, no matter how you slice it. You know, and that's someone, if it's not me, it's someone in the organization's handling it, doesn't matter who. That's not something that you can easily measure in a strategic plan, other than give customers...
No, but it has a little, has a little space that fits it to...
It plays in something, yeah.
I mean, I do actually think it all kind of interconnects back to the split shift plan. I mean, it seems like it has to. That's why I'm saying I think it's critical that you have a four, five, six-pillar, you know, strategic plan. If it gets bigger than that, it gets unwieldy, and it gets unmanageable. It's not fair to the person you're asking to manage it, you know, if it gets too, you know, too widespread.
And I can tell you a little bit better from the town hall perspective. It's very challenging for most employees to do what they do in town hall and do this planning and strategic thinking. Because usually what they're doing in town hall is, precludes all the other activities.
It's marching. They're marching through the stuff that's in front of them.
Exactly. They're dealing with people coming in the building, reacting to situations.
That's why if the plan is built in a way that allows it to wrap around the marching that's going on, you know, that day-to-day marching whole, you know, is kind of the support system for the strategic...
Or they turn the march column ten degrees this way. Not that way anymore.
It allows you to start to offend some of it when it's done in a controlled environment.
What at least one town hall not far from us is doing, I don't want to say who, is they're actually closed while their employees work certain hours of the week, close to the public. And that allows this kind of stuff, or who knows what it is they do at that time.
Uninterrupted time.
But it's uninterrupted time.
Planned availability.
Peter never liked that. I don't hate it as much as he did, but it doesn't feel right to me. We have good hours at town hall in total. We're open as many hours as almost anyone around us. Because, you know, as employees, we're thirty-seven and a half hours. I think town hall's open forty and a half or something like that. Maybe it's forty-one and a half. And then we just juggle hours and cover and stuff like that. Forty-one and a half hours is good, really good.
So how do you rationalize the ADD work?
Well, that's voluntary time, just like you. But to get a group of people together to have isolated time, I can find time sometimes. Others can find time to get it together. What are the chances of that happening? That's hard. And we have a department head meeting once a month. Sometimes we have to cancel it, it's just not going to happen. So that's a real challenge, and that's a real problem in the organization, that we have such a hard time making that time. Yeah, I don't know how to improve that.
Is, if, all the committees are assigned in a way that supports theoretically, you know, the employees of the town hall are working in concert with committees. I mean, I know it, you know, it's not like they're sitting at a desk side by side, that's not what I mean, but... They're connected. So it makes me wonder, you know, if we can utilize some volunteer time to, you know, to help with that. I don't know if that's possible. I'm just thinking out loud with you about your problem, that particular problem.
Certain committees are very self-sustaining. Historical committee is the best example I can think of. They don't have staff help, except in very limited instances. Other boards and committees have significant amount of staff help. There's not a right or a wrong here, it's just that everyone's different.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you and I went to the Board of Health, you know, and that's very intensively involved in paid staff, as well as, you know, a smart group. So it does make you wonder sometimes if there's... I mean, I know we try to support you as best we can, and there's some things we can help with, and other things we can't. But I think that there's kind of that open willingness to say, if you've got a task for us, tell us, and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, and I will say, I greatly appreciate that, and not every board is like that in town. And part of the reason is because they haven't sat down and seen the whole pie.
Exactly.
You know, and they haven't heard from you as a board who appoints most of them. What is it you think we should be doing? You know, and then some of them have their own mission, absent you and your thoughts. They have state law, they have town bylaws. So they don't even have to care what you think. You know, they're following these rules.
It's interesting, though, the thing that Kevin and Dan have been doing this year so far, though, is having everybody come in. I think is very helpful.
I think that helps.
It really creates, it allows a dialogue.
Well, we haven't had everybody. We've had boards that I think have had issues.
Well, issues, but not only that, aren't you speaking to people who are being renewed? I mean, that's, I guess, what I'm saying, so if there's an opportunity there.
It's flexible. People are seeking an incumbent spot, we will have them off of it, for example, on any board.
So I don't think anyone questions the fact that the volunteers virtually all mean very well. Have their hearts in the right place.
Nobody goes to their board meeting and say, I'm really going to stink.
I'm going to sabotage, that's right. But given that, they don't know what helps, if you will, the whole town.
That's why the vision thing is really important.
They have a very specific vision about what they're doing, and that one vision could actually be hurting a larger vision.
And a lot of our questioning the subcommittees along that very line, like, the bigger picture in mind is this. How does that, how do you fit what you do into this?
And some of them will rightly tell you, my responsibility is to say no. Someone else says yes. As long as they understand that, and they understand how it fits in the big picture, that's okay. But it's when they don't really know, oh, something, we were potentially going to say yes to that? Why? So, but logically, when we've talked about it, I don't know how you get a lot of people in a room from a schedule standpoint. Chairs and vice chairs, I think you can do. Three months' notice, let's say, you can get a good attendance. But again, you know, they may or may not come.
But if you're looking for information from those groups, what makes sense is to get on the agenda at one of those meetings. Go to them and really, you know...
Yeah, and if liaisons to groups wants to start going to meetings, I'd be happy to come to a lot of them. Just to deliver some sort of a message. Look, here's what we're doing, here's what we'd like from you. If you have any feedback, knock yourselves out. Just to make sure their opinions are worthwhile. You know, I don't know what they think. Some of them know that, some of them probably don't. They see you once a year, or once every three years.
So in our July tenth packet, Bob did distribute his final update for fiscal fourteen of the goals and actions he undertook. What I think we ought to do is have, as was suggested, have two of us put together a review matrix and evaluate those formally for this year. Next year's goals can come out of this visioning, in part out of this visioning process. Are there volunteer volunteers that would be willing to take that material and craft a proposed course?
I suppose I could be one of those people.
Okay, we have Dan, who else?
I could work with him. I mean, you know, I mean, unless somebody else has an interest in doing that or wants to join the party.
I'd be happy to tag along, I've got a crazy schedule these next couple of weeks.
That's the reason I raised my hand, is I'm just trying to, you know...
Then you need to have a meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, I know a lot of people are really busy and...
So would it be...
Dan and I just stick around and guard the community.
Come up with a format, I was saying, a net plate template, and then we'll all kind of vote on it.
Feel free.
And I did want to ask the board, you're scheduled to have one meeting in August and three in September? I don't, absent a possible meeting with the RMLD commissioners, stat aside, I don't think you need to meet three times in September. You should meet on September second, but if you want to look at the other two meetings and tell me which night's a better or worse, I don't know, sixteenth and twenty-third, I think it is, that would make sense.
Should we make one of those divisions?
I think one of those should be a meeting, and one of those should be as needed. And I don't think the RMLD situation is going to fit into September. Sharon and I talked about it.
It'll be that long?
Just because of her workload.
Oh, Sharon.
She's hitting pause here.
Yeah, she's really under the gun right now. And just to be clear, if we're having a September twenty-ninth town meeting, which you'll decide soon, in order to use free cash, she has to be certified by the state in September.
Oh, so she has to really push.
Otherwise, we can't use free cash or reserves from the enterprise funds.
Yes, so she would have to...
And there is at least one instance where we absolutely need funding. So we could be slightly disingenuous and say, "Let's just take a hundred grand out of health insurance and put it over there for now." We'd have to tell the town meeting, "Look, we have to put it back, but we can't legally do it yet." So she's really working hard to get that done so as to avoid that kind of a discussion.
But her investigation is, for all intents and purposes, completed, so write up and...
Yeah. Okay. She, she still asked a couple of questions today, but I think she's finished.
Would we want to use that third day in September as an attempt to get together over this...
It seems like it makes sense to do a...
Over which thing?
The, getting the department heads together in an evening, or devote that Saturday of that week for that purpose.
Saturday morning. I would say the Tuesday night would probably be a good idea, and if you just meet two or less of you, it's not a public meeting. You know, we've tried to schedule, and I've, I've got one in the fall, you know, workshop meetings, but it's hard to really take everything else and say, you know, "In public, you're not welcome tonight." I know some have a problem, but we're having a workshop tonight. You can't practice, if you're going to have a selectance meeting, a certain amount of that's going to be spoken for by other people, whether you like it or not.
And it, it's clear that that is an ever-growing...
Yeah.
You know, portion of the public meeting. But so, to that end...
Yeah, you and I can...
If it's a two-person thing, you know, it's only two of us...
That's fine, we meet at the head, same old...
And we can, you know, whatever time you can get here, honestly, morning, noon, or night, but we work till Tuesdays at seven, so anything within that reasonable timeframe is not hard for department heads anyways.
Yeah.
Tuesday night's good because usually the other folks doing board meetings, Gene especially, does not have Tuesday nights because of the selectmen. So that is a nice timeframe.
I could probably get here earlier if I knew the date in advance, and maybe we'd get started at five, does that help?
Sure.
Six, absolutely.
I mean, I, you know, I could make almost any kind of a schedule, you know? We give a little advance notice.
Let me see what items we know about. One of the, one of the committees wanted to commit, the Climate Protection or whatever they are committee, they keep changing their name. Do you, did they ask you, because they're on an agenda, and I think I...
Yes, yes, they, they have that report to present.
They're one of those two dates, right. I think they're probably flexible, so I'll find out. That's the only agenda item I wasn't positive whether there was flexibility as to move them. So we'll find out if they have flexibility and then we'll get back to you.
That's the report that we've got a copy of electronically?
Yeah, uh, some time ago. I was going to say in the spring.
Just as an aside, you know, our next meeting is not until...
August 19th?
Yeah. So...
We've got to get together before that, maybe.
Yeah, and I'm going to be, I am going to be out of town, you know, during that meeting.
I will be out of town about three days.
So I don't know what that means to...
Marcia, are you available remotely or you're in the wrong time zone?
So 19th? Uh, I could, I, I think I can be. I'm on a connectivity issue. I would have been a few counts.
So the 19th is a question mark.
So aside, I noted that the Historical Commission made their quorum by remote participation for the demolition label.
I didn't know that.
One of them phoned in, and they had to have four or five, I think, to...
Carl, Carl Midnight phoned in. It is a little, you can tell he can't hear because he doesn't always respond when his screen is called, so it's not perfect.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so...
Keeping to the tempo is hard, too.
To, to really get that to work effectively, the, the system you need is so expensive and it's, you know...
It's more than this.
Well, it's, it's not just that. You need, you need a system and then you need, truly, you need to remain constant on the, on the end of the people, where there are most people to set, to, to ask a remote person, you know, "Do you have something to say?" Because a lot of times they can't cut in. It's not really...
Right.
So it, it makes it a little harder. There's more of an onus on the people in the, really, to make it work.
I've asked other boards and committees to chime in, and very few have used it. The school committees never used it, they saw no use in it, but the current school committee may have a different opinion, but that was the prior year's committee.
Well, I mean, I think it's important, it, it depends on the makeup of the people on it, you know.
EDC used it a week or two ago. I know the Historical Committee has used it, so there's a handful.
And it's got to be phoned, we can't Skype in or...
Well, that's what your policy says now, which is why I stuck it on an agenda. You can Skype, it has to be up there so the public can see it. It can't be there.
Well, they can, how will they hear?
So you've got to think about what you're doing on the other.
Well, then the problem is, how does the public then see any, any projected materials?
Right.
You know, and I mean, there's a, it's a little bit more of a challenge.
Oh, yeah, because you got one...
The mics would happen, somehow feed the Skype.
Uh, I don't think so.
They're both, it's the same. But it's the audio portion of Skype.
Well, it's, it's one of those things, it would help solve the problem, especially if it's, if it's a two-way thing, then you can, it's a lot easier to cut in to your board.
It's easier to...
Yeah.
Hey, don't forget that.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have cameras on these, but we could easily find a lot of talks to do.
Yeah. So, Marcia, you're a question mark for the 19th or a definite?
I'm, I, I believe I'm going to be able to call in remotely.
John, you're a definite on the 19th?
I'm definitely not here.
Definitely not here, okay, so we're, we're down to minimum fishing game.
Oh, yeah.
Is a different date in August better? 12th or 26th?
Actually, I don't remember.
12th would be much better for me.
12th would work for you, would work for me. How about you, Marcia?
I think it works for me.
Yeah, I'd be all right. I mean, you can just...
I don't know, people are going to say, "I'll be all right," and then you look at the phone.
By the way, it's, it's easy to put this contact...
Obviously not.
The other machine, if you want.
Not for a long time.
Good, let's do it.
I usually can't tell you tomorrow if I'm free unless I have my phone.
I don't think it matters to me, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, the 12th is actually better for me.
Yeah, can we move it?
Well, let's try that.
Okay.
I'll send you an email tomorrow to confirm, and I might find an issue, but, you know, someone might have the room, but we'll throw that off.
Okay, of course.
Last topic for tonight is approval of minutes from our July 15th meeting.
The Board of Selectmen approved the minutes of July 15th, 2014 is amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marcia, seconds, are there any edits or changes?
Yes, sorry. Paula Jameson, just look at me. I'm not, uh, let's see, I don't know what page this is, sorry. Page two. The discussion about the bucket trucks, there's a sentence that begins with my name, noting a lineman who purchases vehicles, works many hours of overtime, and he has a side job.
The point I think you were making, this must be a sign...
The point I was making is, does, how, how, how can he work a side job?